All right. I'm going to call to order the regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council, acting on behalf of the successor agency to dissolve the Bellflower Redevelopment Agency and the Bellflower Finance Authority to order at seven o'clock. And let it be known that we're in closed session, we're returning from closed session, and there's no reportable action. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Santinas.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Coops.
Here.
Councilmember Schnableger.
Mayor Dutton.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to excuse the absence of Councilmember Schnableger.
Second.
Let the record reflect that, and I'll also let the record reflect that all councilmembers except for Schnableger are here. Can I have everybody rise for the invocation led by our Mayor Protem Sunny Santa Inez and the pledge allegiance to follow by our Director of Economic Development, Jim Delonga.
Let's borrow a head in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your goodness. We recognize your presence among us this evening. As we gather this evening, we thank you for all the blessings you've bestowed upon us. We thank you for giving us wonderful staff. We thank the members of our military, our first responders. As we gather this evening, please keep them safe so that they can continue to keep us safe. As we also meet tonight to discuss the business before us, please enlighten us, please guide us, and give us the wisdom to decide what is best for the city. We ask all this in your name. Amen.
Please face the flag and join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As a reminder, the city's next general municipal election will be held Tuesday, November 6, 2018, for City Council Districts 1, 3, and 5. This election will be consolidated with the general election conducted by the Los Angeles County Register of Voters. Our goal is to make this transition as smooth as possible. Therefore, if you have any questions about the election or voter registration, or which council district to reside in, please contact the City Clerk's Office at (804) 1424, extension 2271, or via email at cclerk@bellflower.org. Also, I have a reminder here to all residents that there will be daily activities for kids at our supervised parks over the summer. These three supervised parks are Cruthers Park, Simmons Park, and Thompson Park. They all have fun and supervised activities planned for Monday through Friday. You can download the summer calendar at www.bellflower.org, or visit any of the supervised parks to pick up the calendar. With that, Mayor Protem Sunny Santa Inez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thompson Park is currently accepting walk-in registration to their upcoming senior excursion to Pechanga Casino. The Pechanga Resort and Casino features slot machines, table games, and non-smoking poker room with 43 tables, bingo facility, and private gaming rooms. All participants must bring a photo ID and a $10 fee, which includes deluxe transportation and a $5 casino play. The space for all excursions is limited, so register early. The excursion is scheduled for Wednesday, June 20, 2018, from 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Registration and refund deadline is Sunday, June 3, 2018. Thompson Park is located at 14001 Bellflower Boulevard. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Inez. Councilmember Juan Garza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to provide an update to the community regarding an issue that I've been bringing up here lately regarding the light rail that's being proposed to come through our city. So at the May 24 meeting of the Metro Board at 9 a.m., there's a lot of stakeholders that came and presented their viewpoints. A lot of the viewpoints that were presented that night, I mean, that morning, did not concur with our city's position on it. But I'm happy to report that after two hours of public speaking, and after everyone that was there, I'm happy to report that the position of the city, which was to have the light rail continue to be studied to either end at Union Station or the downtown core, was approved. It's a great victory for our city, for our region. And as part of the process, I'm really proud to report that I think we built a really strong coalition of stakeholders that I hope will continue to muster on. That included Supervisor Han that was here a couple weeks ago to state her position in support of our position on this, the mayor of Long Beach, Robert Garcia, Speaker Anthony Rendon, Congresswoman Melinda Sanchez, the mayor of LA, Eric Garcetti, as well as his delegation on the Metro Board, as well as the boards of Equal Rapid Gateway, obviously our city council and our staff. And last but not least, the participation of our residents and our businesses who went out there to Metro and throughout this process stated their position for what they wanted for Bellflower. So what does this all mean? It means that after the study that was, these alternatives that were selected on the 24th, those two are going to be the only ones that are going to proceed forward to be studied as part of the environment process. That study should be done at the end of next year. So at the end of next year, we're going to have a couple more rounds to see where it is that this line is going to end. And again, at the end, what we want is for it to end in Union Station. Going forward, the timeline would be breaking ground on this project in 2021, and for this line to be completed by 2028. So we're not done with this project. We're in the initial stages, but Bellflower will be at the table, and we'll continue to state our position of maintaining our bike trail, of calling for great separated line, and as well as having that one seat right to LA Union Station. But nonetheless, May 24th was a great day for Bellflower. So I'm going to share that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. Councilmember Mr. Coops.
Yes, and I wanted to kind of go over what Juan just said. What it basically says is that we'll be able to get on a train in Bellflower and, not changing seats, go all the way to Union Station. That was what we were hoping for, and that was what was accomplished at this point in time. Am I getting that right?
Not quite yet.
Right. We've got another vote in 12 months. What's the next vote, the timeframe?
Back around, yeah.
About a year from now. And that'll be the final icing on the cake. But to get past this initial hearing of last week, which was an 8-0 vote for the Schedule E method of getting to LA was a real victory for our area. All right, number four, Dan Coops. The grand opening of the Los Angeles County Fire Museum is scheduled for Saturday, July 14, 2018, and that's going to run from 11 a.m. to 5 p.m. The Fire Museum is located on the first floor of the main event center and showcases some of the 60 antique fire engines from the association's collection. The association is planning a huge event for residents and visitors to show off their new location and share the history of the American Fire Services and create a community vibe. Make sure to save the date for this great event. For more information, you can visit www.lacountyfiremuseum.com. I've talked to the folks that are in charge of the museum. They're looking to have between 5,000 and 6,000 people show up for this event. And it'll just really be a great day. We're going to rock off the boulevard there. They won't have all 60 of their fire engines out there, but they'll have the best of the best. And they are showing, this will have national prominence, this museum. People are going to come from all over the country to see what's going on. And this is going to be a place where the children can come and visit as school projects. It'll be open every day for the public to see what's going on. And of course, on the second floor is the event center that we christened in February that's having great response with all kinds of activities in there. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Coops. Okay, item 10, public comments. Mr. Stewart.
This is the time set aside for the public to address the City Council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the City Council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the City Council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item. You'll be given a reasonable amount of time to address the City Council.
Okay, anybody wishing to speak on a non-agenda item are welcome to come forward. Hey, John.
I think I will.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, staff, ladies and gentlemen. My name's John Butts. I'm a resident here in Bellflower. And I just have a couple things that I want to bring up tonight. I was wondering if there's a way that Bellflower can finally settle down and do some sort of a color code for properties. Because with what's going on in town here with the new developments and stuff, you don't want to look like south of the border with all these really wacky paint jobs. The residents, I don't think you have to worry about. The hard thing is going to be doing it for the commercial side. But if we try to play with earth tones or something, try to copy some other city to get a handle on it, because you look at the Chertous Green buildings and all this other stuff, painting them black, and it's disgusting for what we're trying to do and get ahead. Plus, it hurts the new developments. That's the one item. The second item is basically, Mr. Garza was down at that light rail thing, raising hell with all of them, thank goodness, and they were actually listening. So really got to pat them on the back for standing there and stand up to Garcetti and the rest of them and get their attention. There was a few other people down there that still deserve a pat on the back also. So with this rail thing, I think if the embarrassment is put onto it, that it should be completed and up and running by 2028 for the Olympics. Because if you get the League of California Cities behind you, Garcetti's going to have to give in and stay with you too, because you've got two major football teams now. You've got stuff going up here, but you've got a lot of events. You've got the world-class soccer coming to it. So it's an initiative to actually push forward, and if the city would get with the League of California Cities to put the pressure on, I think it would come through quicker, with less pain, too. Now, the last, the other thing I'd like to bring up is about 15 years ago, we had a rendition in the newspaper showing a transit center at the end of the freeway here in Norwalk. That thing was proposed 25 years ago, along with this light rail thing, to connect the three airports. So that's another item, if this city would get with the League of California Cities and put the pressure on to take the money away from good old Jerry Brown and the train to nowhere, they could put that in place. And if they could do it at the same time, you could save a lot of money on the whole darn situation. But that would be a very good thing for not just Bellflower, but everybody around LA, Riverside, San Bernardino, Orange County, everything would connect. And I know with your little game playing with Han and a few of the others, they could help you put the pressure on, which I would be more than happy to even help you with it if I can. So I would like to see you at least listen to that part and maybe try to do something. Now, the last thing is, unfortunately, I hate doing things like this, but there's a new restaurant going up there on Alondra Boulevard at 10325. And unfortunately, who's ever building it isn't up to the standards of what should be. You take a look at that darn thing, it looks like some, it looks like the general contractor's trying to do part of most of the stuff himself, the jack-of-all-trades who knows nothing about nothing. And that's like a gateway building coming into this city? It looks like hell. And there's no equipment screen around the air conditioners that are put up there, brand-new ones. And I don't think, I don't know if anybody's brought that to their attention, but shoddy workmanship, in my opinion, going on there. Anything to cut the cost and be Mr. Cheap. Like I said, I hate coming down on somebody like that, but when you've got something, when you're driving into the city, a main building you're going to go by, and a mortuary at that, then I'd put a sign up on it called The Last Supper and leave on the way out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butts. Anybody else wishing to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Anita McGinnis. Actually, it was kind of ironic that John said what he just did, because I was driving up and down my streets today and the last few days, thinking the city is awful boring because it's all gray and black and brown. So unlike John, I would like to see more color in here. So just thought I would add my little comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGinnis. Anybody else? Okay, then we're going to move on. We're going to move ahead to the consent calendar right now, item 14, because I feel there's somebody going to recuse themselves from item 11A when we get there. And that way, you won't have to wait around to come finish the consent calendar. So what's your guys' pleasure for the consent calendar?
Move the consent calendar.
Second.
No special treatment? Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Coops, and a second by Mayor Protem Sunny Santa Inez. Without objection, that'll be the order. Okay. Item 11A, Mr. Stewart.
This is a public hearing. It's entitled Consideration of Possible Action. Conduct a public hearing to consider issuing one medical cannabis business permit for dispensary use. Following the public hearing, the City Council may adopt one of these resolutions, and only one of these resolutions for an MCPBP. Resolution number 1828, a resolution approving medical cannabis permit to operate a cannabis dispensary at 17812 Bellflower Boulevard. Resolution number 18-29, a resolution approving medical cannabis business permit to operate a medical cannabis dispensary at 90329038 Artesia Boulevard. Resolution number 18-30, a resolution approving a medical cannabis business permit to operate the medical cannabis dispensary at delivery at manufacturing facility at 10040 Artesia Place. What the recommendation of the City Council is a multi-fold recommendation, as you'll see, and one that I think I want to read specifically for the audience, because there's a lot of moving parts in this. Oh.
I just wanted to let you finish introducing the item before.
Go ahead, recuse yourself.
Okay, great. So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, on the basis of an FPPC-determined conflict due to an employer-client relationship, I'd like to recuse myself from this item.
All right, let the record reflect that. Councilmember Garza is recusing himself from item 11A.
So back to the recommendation. Recommendation one is to cause the city clerk to conduct a random drawing to determine the order presentations during the public hearing, being that there are three applicants that are eligible for this permit. Not to show any favoritism at all, we're looking at doing a random drawing. The city clerk will execute that at the beginning of this process. Two is to open the public hearing and consider applications for dispensary use MCPB in the order determined by the city clerk. Three, after receiving testimony on documentary evidence for each application, close the public hearing and consider ranking sheets used by the individual councilmembers to determine which applicant, if any, is ranked for the dispensary use MCPB. Four, after determining the ranking of the applicants, decide whether to issue the dispensary use MCPB to the highest-ranked applicant. And remember, this decision, as all the others made thus far in this process, are completely discretionary. Five, if the City Council decides to issue an MCPB to the highest-ranked applicant, then it should consider adopting the appropriate resolution for that applicant, or alternatively, discuss and take other action related to this item. The forced ranking system is a chart, which we will show at the appropriate time, and will be explained by the city attorney on how that's used for the audience certification as well. And I think right now, I would, the council should open the public hearing, and then you should determine the ranking permit, right?
Aren't we going to do the ranking order first?
Circle.
Yeah, let's get the ranking drawing done first, if we don't mind.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just for the benefit of the audience, you'll see that the city clerk has three slips of paper, which are all three applicants. She's going to fold those pieces of paper, put them into that bowl, and they will be drawn out by the city clerk to determine the ranking order in terms of the forced ranking sheet, which we'll go over in a moment.
Okay, I'll read the names before I put them in, just for transparency. Bellflower Medical Wellness. EEL Holdings LLC. First name drawn is Joint Forces LLC. Second name drawn, Bellflower Medical Wellness. And third, EEL Holdings.
And, Mr. Gurecki, would you put up that form?
And while he's doing that, what we just did there for the audience that didn't understand, it's just an order for the presentations for each entity during the public hearing. That's all it is.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you'll see that Mr. Gurecki is typing in those names in terms of the presentation. Just to briefly go through the forced ranking order, you'll see that there are lightly blue, light-blue boxes that go out from each applicant. So for example, for Joint Forces, there are three light-blue boxes. Since Joint Forces is the first presenter for purposes of the public hearing, the council would rank Joint Forces after the first presentation as number one, because that's the only one that you've heard from. It would go on through the next two presentations, and each individual council member will make a determination of whether or not subsequent presenters are ranked number one, number two, or number three, depending on which order they come in. At the conclusion of the presentations and the conclusion of the public comment with regard to the presentations, councilmembers will provide the city clerk with their forced ranking sheets. Please sign the top of it so that the city clerk knows whose forced ranking sheet is whose, and the clerk will then make a determination whether there's a clear number-one ranked presenter, and she will then announce it at that point. Any other questions at this time?
I do have a question. So if that's the case, and then we do have our, after the ranking order, and then we do have a vote, it'll be, one of us will do a motion, and a second, we will do a vote at the end.
Correct.
For that one that is ranked one.
Correct. You'll select the correct resolution and make a vote on that particular resolution.
Okay. That makes me clear.
And make a motion to open the public hearing.
Yeah. Was there, I was thinking, before we do that, Mr. Gurecki, was there going to be a staff presentation, a synopsis of how we got here, or Mr. Stewart? Okay, just for people in the audience.
So, as the council member, on December 18, 2017, the short meeting, as we all recall, the council issued non-conditional use permits for medical cannabis business uses. In February 26, 2018, the council adopted Resolution number 18-05, which clarified and changed slightly the minimum qualifications for persons seeking a CUP and/or MCPB. On May 14, 2016, the City Council authorized staff to request and receive supplemental information from interested parties on the transfer list, as defined by Resolution number 18-05, and approved at the same time a process, this process we just explained, going forward for those persons to make the recommendations. Tonight, as I indicated in the opening statement on this, there is one permit at play, there are three candidates for the same permit. It's the council's discretionary item, whether or not they want to rank the three applicants and to issue the permit, or not to issue the permit, it is discretionary, or discuss and take other action related to this item.
Okay, and just for more clarification for the audience, these three players are the only ones that returned something for us to, for here tonight?
Correct. There were four eligible applicants on the list, the number of the other candidate that chose not to submit any information for this and then bowed out of the process.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions that's, wanted to feel something, need to be on the record? I got mine out of the way. Okay. All right. We've got a motion on the floor for Mayor Protem Sunny Santa Inez to open the public hearing, and a second by Councilmember Coops. Without objection, that'll be the order. And little notes, we're going to hear from the ranking order at the presentations. I suggest when you come up, like Joint Forces, for example, they'll be first, come up your presentation, if you have a team, one person at a time at the mic, then we'll allow the public to chime in, basically, to see, you know, for, against, or any questions for that applicant that we can, you can bring up to, we can ask that applicant, and I'll let the applicant at the end come back up to rebut any of the public testimony, and then we'll be done with that entity. And then we'll move on to number two, and then number three. So, any questions from the audience? Not seeing any? All right, let's do Joint Forces first.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Did I forget something?
I'll need to swear in anyone who was.
Oh, they did forget something. Yeah, just stand by right there. Anybody and everybody that's going to speak at the podium, we need to get you sworn in. So I want everybody to stand up, raise your right hand, and the city clerk will sing in. And if you think you might or on the fence, it doesn't hurt to raise your hand, it's just going to help us out in time later, because there's always someone at the end saying, "Oh, I should have got here." But anyway, so if you're 1% sure you're going to come to the podium, let's stand.
Stand up.
It doesn't hurt.
Okay, are we all here? Do you solemnly state under penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give in the matter pending before the City Council shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. All right, Joint Forces.
Great. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Administrator. I'm Jonathan Barrett, and with my partner, Heather Alexander. We would like to thank the city for this great opportunity to acquire a medical cannabis business permit and the chance to fulfill our vision of becoming Bellflower's one and only fully-integrated business from seed to sell, providing the only true Bellflower-certified product. A product grown in Bellflower by the people of Bellflower, for the people of Bellflower, under the guidance of the City Council of Bellflower. I'd also like to take this time to thank you guys again for approving our other three licenses, our cultivation, manufacturing, and distribution, and look forward to a long and prosperous working relationship. Heather and I are the owners, operators of Joint Forces LLC. We will be the onsite managers at the facility, working five to six days a week. Thus, you will be able to find us. Any normal business day at our facility should. Any business, any normal business day at our facility, should you have any questions or concerns. We are committed to being responsible and successful business owners. Part of that responsibility will be to run our business in compliant, compliance with the ordinance and laws that the city of Bellflower and the state has put forth, and paying our taxes in a timely fashion. We will also continue our commitment to providing as many jobs as possible to Bellflower, and being contributing members to the community. I'd like to start by giving a quick bio of myself, and then let Heather come up before we get into the PowerPoint. I've been working in cannabis for over 12 years. In those 12 years, I've had various management responsibilities that included the general operation, like the growing schedules, the overseeing, the packaging, sale, and distribution of product, while also having a few human resource responsibility, like the hiring and scheduling of employees and party. I've worked closely with some of the biggest and most successful California dispensaries in California, and have been fortunate enough to win several awards with those companies. I've consulted on cultivation sites as large as 40,000, down to small house grows, and I've worked with clients in Los Angeles, San Luis Obispo, and Clark County, Nevada, in logistics, cultivation layout, and general operations, employee training. My extensive background, I think with the whole cannabis process, will provide the necessary skills to run a very successful dispensary that Bellflower can be proud of. And I think with my experience, and what Heather will tell you when she comes up, and the operations consultant Loudpack Greenpulp that we've had, security consultant Terry Blevins from Armplex, and our fire safety consultant Terry Rowe, who used to be the Down East Deputy Fire Marshal, we have developed plans that ensure we can conduct a retail business in a safe and secure manner. I'd like to introduce Heather, our general, who will be the general manager of our.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. John and I always want to start off by being grateful, so I want to publicly acknowledge the city's staff and residents for giving us an opportunity to live our dream. We would also like to recognize Randy Stover. I know she's not here tonight, but she's been a huge asset to all of the applicants and the community as a whole in this brand-new process. Public speaking isn't normally something that I look forward to, but honestly, I'm thrilled to have this opportunity. John would also say he's excited, but I really feel like cannabis has been divine intervention in my life, and getting these opportunities is very empowering to me. There's an explosive growth in women in the cannabis community, so having six years and hands-on experience and a genuine love and passion for this positions me perfectly to continue my advocacy for women's involvement in this industry. My dad always told me to choose a job that I love, and I'll never work a day in my life, and I truly love this job. Before we start, I wanted to just give you a brief reminder of what my qualifications are. I've spent six years in the cannabis industry that touches all areas, from cultivation, manufacturing, to sales, and prior to that, I worked at senior management level in a locally-owned restaurant and bar group. I was responsible for staff supervision, banking, scheduling, payroll, licenses, certifications, permits, and employee training at all levels. I worked closely with the Health Department and the Alcohol and Beverage License Enforcement to maintain compliance of all laws and ordinances. As I'm sure you all know, Lori Ajax was appointed as chief deputy director for the Department of, the Bureau of Cannabis Control. Prior to that, she was formerly the chief deputy director of the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control for 22 years. I was lucky enough to meet her at a meeting in January, where I personally got to question her on the new regulation. John and I believe that hands down, we're the best fit for this particular license. We're confident that we have the necessary tools and skills to offer a valuable service, and at the same time, fill a void by providing the world's only Bellflower certified product. So, we'll start this thing here.
As you can see, we're Joint Forces, Jonathan, we are the owners. We plan on calling the retail green country, kind of an homage to our roots. We're from a small town like Bellflower, Tulsa, Oklahoma, and we're known as, that's called green country. So, I want to talk about the property a little bit. The property is located at 1004 Artesia Place. It is on a part, a 39,000 square foot parcel. It's going to be a 16,000 square foot building. We currently have 40 parking spots at that facility. We plan on designating, designating at least 20 spots for the retail parking, with two accessible spots. And I think one of the big selling points of our building, and that we wanted to keep in touch with the zoning and what you guys were really looking for, is that we're one of the few loca, not located on a main street. We wanted to have a place where it was easy to find us, but if you didn't need to find us, you would never know we were there. So, I think that's a real plus on our zoning. This right here is, we're showing you a little bit more of the layout, that's where the building, the 16,000 square feet, the other building will house, like we said before, our re, our cultivation, manufacturing, and distribution. As you can see, we have a lot of parking, and that shows us where we will have our accessible handicap ones. Next, I want to go over the security. I know that was a big thing, everybody, you know, with the cities and state, we wanted to make sure we got a very qualified person. We had Terry Blevins, a CEO of Armplex, perform our plan. He was formerly the head of security for Apple Company, and beats by Dr. Dreys. Without getting into too much specific details or whatever, that involved, we will have 24-hour surveillance by ADT or a company like that, with, when we'll also have a 24-hour security guard there at all times. And a lot of our building has concrete walls all the way around, and a locked gated parking lot, so I think we can, that's really bonus. And then I'll let Heather tell you about the actual design.
On the exterior design, we kind of wanted to keep with just a natural community feeling by keeping the durable, earthy building design elements on the outside, possibly using natural silhouettes for the green country moniker up at the top, and then replacing the current landscaping with some beneficial and ornamental landscaping. For instance, mums are nature's insect repellent, so a plant is beautiful as that, and also adding additional protection for the community and our products as well. And then also filling in with some succulents, something to offer a little bit of drought resistance. The inside, we want to keep correlating with the outside, giving a natural feel. I feel like the healing, creativity, and educational aspect of it will all give a comfortable community environment. We want to bring a place where anybody from any social class, they don't have to be a normal cannabis patient, anyone from any walk of life, any age, feels like they can come in there, ask questions, not feel awkward because they already don't have information, and we want to have educational pamphlets and things for people to be able to take home, so that they can really get the best use out of what we have to offer. Our retail operations will carry only tested and state-compliant medicine, will offer education on vast array of benefits of combined and separated properties, with different forms of that available. We'll limit cash transactions with offering incentivized card payments. All cash will be deposited by a manager and, into a safe or kiosk. Armed guards will transport all cash to the bank or credit union, and we've been receiving and will continue to receive retail and industry consultation with a vertically, vertically-integrated Loudpack Inc., Green Wolf, a pre-Ico dispensary. A little background on that group is that they are state-licensed in cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, retail, and have expert experience in real estate as well. They currently have 100,000 square foot light deprivation greenhouse up in Greenfield, California. On that same parcel, they have 50,000 square feet of state-licensed manufacturing labs that's the biggest in the country. So, we have worked with these people in the past to enter competitions, and like John had said, we won awards with them, so we have an ongoing, very friendly relationship with these people, and value what they've got to offer our business. They also work with a lot of other state-licensed industries and have multiple flagship brands of their own. A little bit about our delivery operations, the drivers will carry all necessary and compliant paperwork and identification with them at all times. The delivery vehicle will have safes bolted to the frame for any cash transactions, and card processing will be available with incentives. All safes will be transferred from the vehicle to the facility by a manager and security guard only. The driver will carry no more than $1,000 in the safe at any time, but strive for the smallest amount. All products will be locked and secure, and secured with state-compliant delivery vehicle. I'm gonna turn this slide over to Jonathan.
All right, what we have here is the estimated gross sales for medical only, and with Green Wolf's consulting station, we've estimated we would see 4,500, or 4,054 medical patients per month, roughly averaging about 135 medical patients per day, with an average spending of 100 per, which would essentially give us a gross sales of 405,400 monthly gross the first year, and a total of $4,864,800 in the first year. And we estimate sales will increase 10% annually. And granted, I just want you to know that these numbers are medical, and we would expect sales to double, if not triple, once you guys allow recreational sales, or if you ever do.
All right, in this last slide, we just kind of wanted to talk about what we feel makes us stand out, and why we are the best fit for this application. We are owner-operated, so that offers our business, and our company, stability and longevity. We're an obtrusive and inconspicuous location, again, just on a quarter-mile street. If you want to find us, we're right there. If you don't want to have to look at us, it's very easy to go around that small portion of the, of the city of Bellflower. We're obliging and cooperative business people. We do our best to settle things amicably, and never cause any problems, and to be the best friend and neighbor that we could be. Holding multiple licenses lets us employ more Bellflower residents, therefore, building a bigger community team within the company. In my past experiences in working for local and family-run restaurants, is when you see the owner in there, and they're working as hard as you are, and you see their desire to be successful, it helps everyone be successful. People want to work harder. When the staff will be Bellflower residents, they're providing a service for their friends and their family. So, when the cultivator is gonna grow better, because he knows the manufacturer is his friend and neighbor, the salesperson is his friend and neighbor, and the consumer is his friend and neighbor, therefore, holding everyone on our end to a more accountable level to Bellflower. Bellflower's seed-to-sell business allows the city full integration over our entire process, providing true Bellflower certified product that's tailored to the community needs. So, from every second of the process that we'll go through, anytime, any of you can come down and take a look at what we're doing, and check on things to make sure everything's to your liking, we'll also be on the front line of customer service, so if there's certain needs in the community that they come to us with, we'll have a quicker reaction time to be able to address those specific needs of the community, because we'll just have to walk it across the driveway to the people who can change those things. We will be bringing in the maximum city revenue for Bellflower by having all of our operations in here. Every single cent that we pay in city tax for our entire process goes back to the Bellflower community and no other city in the state of California. We would be fully integrated, and the only company to pay, start to, to start to finish, which John and I lovingly refer to as going full Bellflower. So, we thank you for your guys' time. John's got a few closing comments, so I'll leave two. John does not have a few closing comments, but we appreciate your time, and again, I'm so excited to be here. I'm sure you can tell I'm a little nervous, but it's mostly just excitement turned into anxiety. I've been dreaming about this moment for the past two weeks, since we found out we were back up for it, and we're ready. We really hope that you guys will appreciate what we can offer to the community.
Good presentation, but don't go away.
Okay, absolutely.
Because I might, you might have a question. I have one question.
100%.
The 4.8 million projection, was that just on the dispensary? Or was it the whole?
No, that was just dispensary.
That was just, that's what I guess, what I wanted to decipher there. That was just a dispensary?
And that was true medical, you know.
What do you, what, can you divulge any estimated cost for the rest of the permits? The cultivation, manufacturing, and.
The sales, we plan on doing.
I know, I did, I know.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, were you asking?
Well, I was asking your.
The other three permits, do you remember what?
The other three permits, what was the projected cost in your per forma?
The gross sales on those?
Yeah, yeah. Just refreshing my mind is what I'm trying to get at.
I think it was around eight.
Around eight million for that, okay. So, so eight, if eight is an estimate, you're off your best regulation, and eight plus 4.8, okay, got it. That's where I wanted to go. Okay, I'm fine with that. Any questions, colleagues?
Yeah, you mentioned that you had won some awards at different competitions. What kind of awards did you win?
We won awards through the High Times Competitions, through the Chalice Competitions, their local California Put On Competitions, where we've entered our flower, we've partnered with manufacturers, and entered our concentrates. We've won.
So, what was being judged, your manufactured items?
Being a little modest or whatever, we are, were, from 2014, 2015, and 2016, we were producing the third-highest THC product in the world. We've been in the magazines for three complete years, so the strongest of the medicine, the flavors, we've won.
They have a rotating panel of judges in these competitions, so it really is kind of a personal opinion for who the panel happened to be at that time, but I do believe they try to source industry experts who have a plethora of things to choose from, and we have a tendency of landing in the top three, so.
Wine tasting, where you have all your potential wines.
Exactly, that's exactly.
And the flavors and the.
And coming from a back, a foreign restaurant background, one of the restaurants I spent the most of my time in was a three-story Mexican restaurant, and we had a bar on each floor, and more tequilas than I've ever seen in one spot at a time, outside of a liquor store. So, being able to offer things, and educated options to the consumer, who may not have even noticed that one tequila was different than another tequila, and then educate them on how the tequila's made, and what makes one better than the other, is something that always brought me great joy, so I look forward to getting that option, to actually talk to the customer, who is receiving a product that John and I worked so hard to make as perfect as we possibly could.
So, after you make the product, were you retailing that in a different location, or do you wholesale it to someone who retails it for you?
We would sell directly to the retail, the retail owners themselves.
No distributors, we're really around at that time. You know, you may have a few people calling themselves distributors and.
But you were selling it to the end, the retailer, to, and then they would.
Right, right, because without any sort of, you know, there's no allowance for us without a pre-Ico.
Basically, the process of driving to 1,000 different retailers, and showing your product, showing them the awards you've won, letting them the smell, the taste, everything like that, that's pretty much the only way we were sold. We sold before these new distribution companies have kind of popped up and are doing some of the mass selling for people.
But just being around and seeing the faces throughout the years of the people who have stayed constant has really kind of helped build a network of a community. Before regulation happened, it was much more of a tight-knit group, where people worked to help each other survive, like you would hope local businesses do to each other. Since regulation has come into play, it's turned into more of an ugly survival of the fittest type of thing, so we're just looking to be good people. We don't want to throw any negative things about anybody. We're just happy to be here, happy to still see faces that we know from years ago, still around, and.
Do you personally have retail experience in the cannabis industry?
I have toured many dispensaries.
No, but have you operated, sold?
Personally operated at a retail location here.
Anywhere?
In, in California or anywhere else.
You've never sold it over the counter, where a customer gives you money, and you give them product?
No, that's correct.
Okay. How about you, sir?
No, I have not, but that is why we brought in Green Wolf, which is one of the most successful retail companies out there, and we've set up a, basically, a.
Internship.
Internship already, and have been actually doing, working on that for the last week, but I don't want to say and tell you the last week, because of enough experience.
Now, the other permits we've awarded you, you have had experience in those Fortes, correct?
Agreed.
And this is the one you have not?
Yes.
All right, that's all I have.
Yeah, just to add to that, I just want to say, I think the cultivation process is one of the most difficult processes of the seed to sell, you know, that, it doesn't matter what dispensary you run, as long as the, if the product is not appropriate and safe in for your patients, so.
Thank you.
Ms. Inez?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Ms. Alexander, for someone who's not familiar, used to public speaking, you did well today.
Well, I worked in the bars and restaurants, so I appreciate that. I'm used to.
Okay, very good. Just a couple of questions. Can you show the chart, the layout of your facility? I think that's number two slide. Okay, can you, so where's the, where's the, this? facility? I think that's number two slide. Okay. So where's the dispensary in this layout here?
In front of the red arrow.
I got it, I got it. Lynn, I got it. It's not working. There you go.
Yeah, it is the single building with the red arrow down by itself.
Okay, so this is a place, right? Okay, can you walk me through your plan in terms of the dispensary portion of the business? How's it going to look like? If I'm a customer coming in, what do I do?
Sure, you'll enter through the front here where you see the red arrow.
Can you use a pointer? There you go. There you go. All right.
All right. You will enter through the front door here. There will be a check-in counter and something that leads you behind through like a safe trap door so that no one can just run back.
Okay.
And then the retail area will be back here. I apologize that there's not a slide that shows the interior of the building, but there's a restroom located right here. And like I said, they will come in, there will be a waiting area right here.
All right.
They'll go through the safe door and then they'll have retail here and they'll come back out through the same door that they came in.
So is there, are the products being seen from the waiting area?
No.
If I'm waiting, if I'm a customer, potential customer sitting here, do I see the products behind the counter?
No.
No. So there's going to be some kind of a wall here?
Correct.
All right. So from the street, there's going to be, I think there are windows here, I believe, right?
There are.
Okay. What will I see from the street?
A frosted glass.
Frosted glass. So I will, so the interior is not visible from the street?
No.
Okay. All right. And so the customers, where will they park?
They will have access to these parking spots here. As you can see, they're the accessible ones. And then those will be for other operations.
So right now, you're leasing the whole facility?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So you have exclusive right to all the parking spaces within this particular lot?
A hundred percent.
A hundred percent.
And again, there's a concrete block wall that goes around the entire facility here. And then it's gated, which we're looking into automating.
Okay. Now, you mentioned about twenty-four seven security?
Yes.
Okay. How about your other operations? Will it be open twenty-four seven?
No, we'll have twenty-four hour security. We will work two shifts possibly.
Okay.
But they won't be open twenty-four seven.
All right.
We won't have employees there twenty-four seven, but the guard will be there.
So you open basically during the day?
Yes.
Okay. That's Monday to Saturday, if I recall correctly?
Correct. Well, in the cultivation and the other applications.
Dispensary is open, will not be, will not be open on Sundays?
That's correct.
All right. Very good. Okay. And the other question I have here is, can you talk more about how it's going to be aesthetically pleasing?
Sure.
If I go in as a customer, how do I feel in terms of waiting in your waiting area? There's other customers being attended to in the back room?
Sure. My main goal is to make everyone feel comfortable, no matter what. That's why we chose to kind of go with a natural, more welcoming earth vibe in there and keep some of the natural elements that come from the concrete and the wood. And we've seen this trend through a lot of dispensaries through California. It was a decision we made lightly. We've been monitoring what is popular and we'll have a comfortable waiting area that'll have educational information so that people will get a chance while they're signing in and waiting to go back to kind of review what may be helpful for them before they get to actually go back and speak to someone. So once you go back behind the door, we'll have a lot of, I want to decorate with a lot of educational information. I want people to be able to use what they learn from coming to our place to help heal themselves better. So I feel like using greenery and natural elements and a comfortable setting will just kind of make everyone feel like they can let their guard down, like they don't have any sort of specific stereotype to live up to by branding us with something that's really defined. It seems like a more welcoming vibe for everyone.
So during the typical working day in the dispensary portion of your business, how many employees would you have there on average during the day?
On average, I plan on being there and doing as much hands-on work as absolutely possible. I really enjoy being hands-on. I believe it will rotate throughout the day as we need people. We'll have more people in the middle of the day probably than we would in the evenings, but I believe we would have
About fifteen employees.
Total and on shift, three to four.
When you count in the delivery drivers too, the butters and?
No, just for the dispensary?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
We'd expect fifteen.
Oh, I see.
We would count the delivery driver as part of the dispensary.
I see. All right. Okay.
Employment.
Okay. But not including your distribution portion?
No.
Correct. Or the security guard himself.
Right. Okay, okay. Now, can you show the chart on your projection? Okay, so you're expecting four thousand patients per day, per month? Twenty, that's about twenty-two hundred a day? About two hundred a day?
What'd you say?
Two hundred customers a day?
Yeah, roughly. I was saying like the numbers are getting, had to been altered just with the way recreational started opening up in a lot of these cities.
No, but this only, we're talking about medical for now, right?
Medical, yes.
I'm just trying to figure in terms of you queuing, how many customers would you have in your dispensary on a typical day? So if you're expected to see four thousand and fifty-four patients per month and you're closed six, four days in a month, four Sundays, so you have twenty-six days on average, you're talking about twenty, about two hundred, about two hundred customers per day. So you're going to be open about ten hours a day? How many hours are you going to be open?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The minimum, the whatever.
The full hours.
Okay. So you're looking at about?
Twenty an hour.
Twenty an hour. Okay. So what's a typical?
Yeah, and counting.
What's a typical number of minutes where a customer will select the products, check in and things like that?
It varies per customer. Some are very experienced and maybe even familiar with the products and know what they want. Some people will be first-time patients, but I would imagine on average, no more than ten minutes or so.
Ten minutes, okay.
And that's if they don't have to go through.
So you should be able to accommodate that number of customers, patients per day, per hour?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Now, following up on the question by Mr. Coops about your dispensary experience or lack thereof, and you mentioned about the consultant that you have, can you talk more about your consultant that you have?
Absolutely. They've owned a pre-Ico dispensary in the Glendale, Los Feliz area since, prior to two thousand fourteen at least. And they have won awards at dispensary. They win lots of awards in these competitions. We're just a small fraction of the type of entries that they put in and the other businesses that they work with. Like I said, they have relationships with current state licensed business owners from manufacturing and distribution and cultivation as well. They have a manufacturing brand of their own. Loudpack is their brand and it's very successful. They do cultivation. They partnered with some of the bigger named breeders in the world really to help bring strains in for them. So by being with, connected to them, we also kind of network with a much larger state licensed community just by having access to them and their knowledge because they have so much industry knowledge.
So what is your official business arrangement with them?
Just consult.
Right now?
Is a consultant?
Yes.
Will they be part of your business hands-on? They will be there handholding you in opening the business, operating the business initially? Will they be there for you?
No, they're just, we've known them for eight, nine years, like she said, and they're more friends than anything. And they've just been giving us help. And then we actually brought them on to give us better sales numbers and kind of the delivery since they just started their delivery.
They've been state licensed since they started taking applications this year. So they've kind of got experience with the new regulation already. And I believe they look at us as a little brother type. So our success is, you know, it's good for them too. It just gives longevity.
So do you think that, let's say, if we were to give you the license tomorrow, you can, you have enough expertise to run a dispensary tomorrow?
Yes.
A hundred percent.
I mean.
The parallels in the alcohol and food and beverage are so amazing through this process. I didn't realize that my prior knowledge would come in handy so much, but I've got to deal, you know, in the restaurant industry and bar with the food and alcohol beverage. I've got to deal with OSHA compliance. You've got to deal with a controlled substance and making sure you follow laws and licenses and that everyone is safe. You deal with just about the same issues through those processes. I mean, the state, the governor appointed someone from the food and alcohol industry to govern all of the state's things and help with the licensing there. So I believe the governor saw the parallels as I do and that how close those worlds are to each other, kind of giving me not retail and cannabis experience, but enough similar retail experience that, and also I've toured hundreds of dispensaries. I've interviewed managers. I've set a day at a time in those dispensaries and watched all of these things happen. So it was not my responsibility to be the manager, but I've seen it in action plenty of times that I feel confident. And also, you know, while we'd be building out and getting everything ready, I would be doing an internship with Green Wolf. So any experience that I lacked, I could gain in a short time with them while we were waiting to break ground and open the doors.
Well, from where I stand right now, in terms of the big difference between, let's say, a bar and its dispensary, in a bar, you can use credit card. Dispensary, it's all cash.
That's.
That's the big difference to me.
That's true, but there are a lot of state licensed dispensaries that have found ways to let card payments be processed. And I believe that is on the cusp of changing as in a state change, not just here in LA. So I believe there will be a solution to that.
Okay. Very good.
And then I'd like, I would like to add. I know we may have not personally sold to the people, but if we have sell to the dispensary that sells to the people. So we know the product. I think being able to deal with the dispensaries is no different than dealing with the patients. If anything, we get a better understanding being able to talk strictly directly to the patients. So as we say, you know, as our projections for the grow, you know, we estimate we'll do eight million in sales. The dispensary, we have around little under five million. It's like we're still, we're already have distribution and other things line up to sell the eight million worth of products. So.
We feel very confident we can grow this thing together.
That's our motto, growing together. All right, very good. Thank you so much.
We appreciate your time.
Thank you. Jonathan and Jennifer. Heather, 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 Jennifer. Sorry. All right. Anybody from the public want to comment on what was just spoken?
Yeah, I have a question. They're supposed to do two hundred, two hundred a day customs. How do they do that if the average is ten minutes custom? Because if I'm doing an hour for ten hours, that means that average has to be around, to the customer, three minutes, twenty per hour over ten. Also, is that door going to be advertised as a green door or just any other door? Are they going to still have to, that color of door is going to be green? I teach you places, is that where all the shops are as far as motor shops? And also, I was quite curious, how much is the profit margin on this, on eight million or four million would be?
I have no idea.
Maybe they'll answer it. Because I'm just curious how much they're going to make after, after sales. Okay. I think I got it all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Fred, I didn't see you stand up and take the oath.
You're right. My question didn't surface until that presentation.
We got to do it over again.
We can take the, anybody, there's always somebody. But anybody else didn't take the oath would like to try?
Okay, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly state under penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give in the matter pending before the city council shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Hello.
All right.
My name is Fred Taylor. I just have one question. During the presentation, there was reference to the money being taken to the bank under a credit union. And everything I've heard in the news indications indicates it is a cash-only businesses and that there cannot be bank accounts for this kind of business. So that forms my question. Where the money's being taken to the bank or credit union, what are they doing with it once they get it there?
Well, from what I understand.
They can rebut. They can tell us.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I understand. They're state credit unions. So I don't know. I don't know how that works.
They're federally chartered, huh?
Yeah, they're not federally, yeah. Trust me, California's going to find a way to get their taxes. That I really, I don't have a lot of belief in California sometimes, but I really believe that they're going to find a way to get their tax money.
My name is Wayne Brown. And early on in the process, I thought there was a limit in the distance between a church and schools. This seems to be kind of like in between both of them. And I was wondering if there was any violation in that regard. If our party already looked at that. So that's really my question.
Yeah, all of these three entities here tonight have been vetted in that way for the distances between everything, yes. Anybody else want to chime in on the public hearing of joint forces?
To kind of go where Peter was going, two hundred people per day, four employees? Does the math add up?
Well, that's just.
Have they thought about, or is this part, is there a lot of, part of this is being delivered and they're not coming into the store or, you know?
Well, being an employer, when you're busier, you have more employees where you have busy times, just like a restaurant has busy times at certain eating things, and you just man up, staff up for those times. Twenty an hour, you may have forty an hour, you may have two an hour through the day. Is this average, these are just, I believe from the applicant that they're just estimates.
Okay.
That's all I really think that is.
I'm just saying that I don't, I'm just asking, I'm just wondering, because I can't turn around and talk to them directly.
Yeah, right.
You know, have they thought about the logistics and do they have a plan for if there's more people coming or if they need more employees? How quickly can they get people to come in if it starts getting to be real busy?
Well, as a business, as I'm a businessman and I own business, trust me, as you're busier, you staff, you know, you have more staff. And that's kind of how all businesses really function. They just, if you have a demand of customers, you want to make sure that you're helpful with them and you can service your customers. Yeah. So I would think that that's the direction that they would be. That would be my guess.
All right.
All right.
Like I said, the math didn't add up, so I was all right asking.
Yeah. Well, that definitely is a lot of people. But I think I've heard that number before in other presentations. Yes.
I think it's just a question.
Yeah. Come onto the podium there, state your name, please, and tell us what you got.
Hi, Marina Centron. I don't have to give my address, do I?
No.
Okay.
Did you say Maria?
Marina.
Marina, that's okay. Sorry.
Hi.
That's what I heard the first time.
I haven't been here in a while and I came in, so I apologize for that. So again, I'm hearing, I'm speaking from a public health perspective because that is my profession. And I've been doing that for a long time despite what I look like. I know I look really young, but I've been doing it for a really long time. I hear, so medical cannabis has been around for over twenty years and I'm not against it whatsoever. However, when it comes to the city of Bellflower, I'm still very hesitant because we put a cap on four for, you know, adult use. However, um, when it comes to the city of Bellflower, I'm still very hesitant because we put a cap on four, for, you know, um, adult use marijuana, but now we're looking into medical dispensaries.
We always were medical.
Yeah, it's medical only. There's no recreational uses considered.
Yeah, so this one is for the, yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you. Um, but it still brings up a lot of questions for me, such as this, we all know that this is a very busy street. We know that potentially they have, you know, a large amount of customers coming in. And we already know that there's a lot of traffic jams. I would like to ask questions about have we looked at the crime rates lately around that area? Because I live around that area and I can tell you, crime has been going up. I want to also ask about the advertisement for any of these businesses. I'm not sure if that was already addressed, so if it was. Again, I came in late. I just wanted to be very clear. I don't think we need to have advertisement if that's one of the perspectives of the permit. Customers are going to know that they're there, so advertisement's not needed. I don't think that, um, a lot of the presentation, I heard some if, buts, maybes, perhaps, in the future it might be. And those are the phrases that kind of make me hesitant for wanting that within my community, only because they're planning to expand and how much is Bellflower going to allow them to? Because this is just, you know, um, this is new to them. Uh, again, when it came to the presentation, they also referenced a lot of alcohol. You know, how it's similar to alcohol and how it's similar to big tobacco, and it's, I thought it was funny because it's very, very true. But again, from the health perspective, if big tobacco does what it does and big alcohol does what it does, do we really need more marijuana in the city? Especially if we're already having a problem with the alcohol? That's a question for you all. I want all these things to be considered for not only the money perspective for the city, but I do urge the council, the mayor in particular, to really think about how it's going to affect the community and those that live closest to these dispensaries. Because it's in my side of the neighborhood and I'm sure none of you guys live there. Thank you.
Just so you know, it's in my side of the neighborhood too. Are you aware that it's on Artesia Place, not on Artesia?
Yes.
Okay, because when you said it's a busy street, I'm thinking, I drive down that street five times a day, so I know. It's not busy, other than the businesses there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would like to just make a, a short really comment on this. As you, as you all know, I'm deaf on drugs. But when it's a controlled item, it has a good place. And with the controls that are being put on this by not just the city, but by the institutions that are going to be selling it on their own too. There's a lot of money out there that they're putting up that they could lose, and also there's a lot of money in it where the city can benefit from it. Because without revenue coming into this city and you have no sales tax background anyhow, per se, compared to a lot of the other places, you're going to have to have money in order to substantiate payment of the services you have to render to the general public here. And that's an item people need to look at. So you can't play death on this drug thing and call cannabis a drug and a problem. Alcohol's been around for years. This cannabis has been around for years. Other stuff's been around for years too. I think these people are presenting one hell of a nice format as to how they're going to run their business. And the main thing I'm looking at is how the city benefits by keeping as much of the sales tax generating business in this town, which we haven't done. This here is giving you a group back here that are going to run four of the operations. That means you get every dime of it in here in the city compared to all these other things. You get this, you get that, you get that. You lost the sales tax. And this is the item that I brought up in the beginning when we, when not just myself, but everybody started looking into it. If you try to corner things into one entity, holding the main items that you're interested in, that way you get all the sales tax. As it stands right now, these will be the only, I believe, the only party where you're going to get all the sales tax. So personally, I think they've done a hell of a program on explaining it to the general public, and I'm one hundred percent for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buns. Anybody else? While everybody's thinking, I have a cell phone here. Everybody check and see if they got their cell phone, because this was found out in the lobby on one of the benches out there. I could have just handed it to you while you're up here. Well, you have to come up here just anyway, because since nobody from the public wants to come in. If you want to come forward to the podium, both of you, and you can, um...
We appreciate the honesty of whoever turned the phone in. Thank you.
It was the head of public safety, our director.
Surprise, surprise. I want to say, first of all, I couldn't be happier that public health was brought up on us and me getting a chance to feedback, because it's something that I don't take lightly. My cousin, who is the closest one to my age, works at Passages Malibu, and I called him, because I wanted his honest opinion. Now, he's not a cannabis user, like I said, he's, he's a drug counselor. And I wanted to know, you know, I have friends who struggle with alcohol addiction, and I want to know my place in their sobriety and make sure that I'm not contradicting anything that's good for them. He and I talked it over for a very long time, and I left the conversation feeling that my experience with cannabis is that it's benefited people more than it's hurt anyone that I know who's ever used it. I've seen it in my own personal circumstances, get people that I love off of prescription drugs and alcohol without any of the side effects of a pharmaceutical treatment to do the same thing. I believe that it's a good thing for people and not all of cannabis is intoxicating. And there are lots of different parts of it that are non-psychoactive, that you can use as healing. I want to point out that it's also mandated that we donate to the facility here for rehabilitation. So we will be doing as a whole, as applicants, giving back and trying to help with those ailments in the community as well. It's something I take very personally as far as how cannabis can help people recover and not help with... I thi- I think once people get an opportunity to see this play out, their minds will be changed. And really, that's all I've ever hoped for in my life, is to change the minds of people with what I've been able to learn. So I think once this is going and everybody sees the good that cannabis can bring to the community and that it's not a bad thing, that we'll be having very different conversations on the reviews.
And as far as how many employees in the parking, you know, we estimated we probably have twelve to fourteen on staff, including the delivery. And just for anybody that's worried about the parking, we had a meeting, unfortunately, that was canceled tomorrow with Norman, in the city manager, to possibly speak about using his property for extra parking or other things that we might need. So I know we're already thinking far past, you know, the twenty spots and making preparations for more parking, because we went around and talked to The Bachelor Button and the other companies that are around us, and that was one of their only concerns too. And so we, we told them that our spot had forty and that if we needed to have our employees park somewhere in another parking facility or something like that, we would do that, and we've already kind of started the ball rolling just to make sure if that did, we could handle that immediately.
John and I chatted with the nearby neighbors about what their concerns in the neighborhood were and with us. I gave them my personal home phone number so that they can contact me should more questions or concerns arise. But the majority of what I heard was, don't take all of our street parking. We, we, like John said, had talked about being proactive on finding a solution should it become a problem, although it's not a problem for us now. Um, and then we also, you know, we just wanted to get to know the people around us and what made them successful businesses, because a lot of those businesses, I mean, The Bachelor Button might as well be a historical landmark in Bellflower. And I wanted to see why people loved that place, what had made it stay around so long. So we're just trying to blend in, not cause a problem. I believe by having our twenty-four hour security guard there, it'll make the neighborhood as a whole safer, because it will be on the minds of criminals that there's a guard there. He's got access to the cops around. It will also give the cops on patrol more ability to help real problems that aren't going on where we, where we are. We will have that area covered. I haven't personally seen much crime around. There's not vagrants or any trash. We, we have a pretty good street there. We continue to keep it friendly, keep it clean, and do everything that we promised.
Yeah, I go by there enough that all the cars on the street are employee cars from all the businesses down that industrial area.
I was going to say, the auto body shop is pretty much all the parking spots.
But it does look like he's making efforts to expand and kind of make more space for himself over there as well, so.
Well, you took his space where he was parking the cars.
I know.
Yeah, you evicted him is what I remember.
We have given every allowance possible to make the transition easy on him, and I believe if you personally questioned it, he would say the same thing. And as well with all the ten, any tenant, including our landlord, who would be leaving the buildings. We tried to be, make this as seamless as possible. We thank you guys for your time.
I have one question.
And a public comment as well.
On, um, the question came by more one pub, of the public about the many people passing two hundred a day or whatever. But I know some of it, don't you have some, if there is a dispensary there or in the dispensary world, isn't a lot of the phone orders, they know what they want? They just phone it in? They don't even come on the premises and you deliver it to them?
I was going to say, once a customer has come, you know, and they have their orders, they'll be able to preorder that. So the people that need to hurry up and come by, show their ID, have the package pay, they could be in and out in a couple of minutes, you know? It's whatever the customer...
And the menu will be online, so they'll be able to...
Because there's a lot of people that's discreet about it and probably don't tell a lot of people, whatever, and they don't even want to be seen there and then it's over the phone once they set up an account. I guess it's an account, I guess, or something like that.
Once they're in the system.
And another comment that a young lady was talking about was advertisements. How do you, how do you plan to grow your business for advertising as just social media only? I knew, you know, I think what I thought about is billboards. Well, we know that there's a, billboards are, you know, freedom of speech kind of a thing is what I understand anyway, so.
I was going to say, we were just going to stick to social media. We have a big, really big Instagram following. And then I know you guys know about like Weed Maps and the other small social. I know that billboards has become all the rage right now. I'm sure if you drive around, you see a lot of them, but we were mainly going to stick with just...
Leafly is another good website that offers information, different things to the cannabis community as well, so we plan on utilizing all of them.
Okay, that was just my follow-up that you wanted to, that from the audience, I just wanted to, you know, fill the gaps. Unless there's, unless there's questions from the colleagues.
There's one more question that the audience asked about the cash handling. Can you address that question?
I...
The question was about, because it's a cash business and you cannot deposit your cash in a federally registered bank? So how would, how would you, how would you handle the cash?
Um, well, first of all, the Secretary of State has currently employed a few California lawyers and different members and organized a board to put together a solution statewide for that. As Mayor Dunton said, there are federal credit, well, I'm sorry, credit unions that aren't federally regulated and can offer services. Yeah, state licensed. Um, we are working on, we're working on getting angled with one of those. Green Wolf is helping us with the banking issue as well, finding solutions for that, because they've found one for themselves.
So that's already active, I'm sorry, Mr. Center. So there is dispensaries or in the cannabis world, they're actually using the financial institution of a credit union, that state credit union now?
Right, and a lot of places have bank accounts and they just get closed down once you're discovered to be a cannabis business. So there is a lot of banking allowances and, you know, if they don't take your money, they just stop you from, they close your account once they realize you're a cannabis business. So there is some banking available. It's just not, it's frowned upon at this moment. But like I said, the Secretary of State's working on finding a solution to that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Coops has got one more. Heather, Heather, Heather.
It's good she, then she came, or you'd be stuck, man.
I'm surprised I move so fast in these shoes.
So, uh, in the businesses that you offer now with cannabis, how is your banking conducted?
As of now, we have no businesses. We are...
So you, this is all new to you. You, you've never grown, you've never distributed, and you've never retailed? That's what you're saying, because there has to be some money transfer here, otherwise it's called a charity.
We have regular bank accounts and we, as of right now, we still use Chase and have been using Chase.
All right, so if I have a, if I'm buying from you, I can actually buy the product from you and you'll take my check and I will have to worry about collecting cash from the end user?
No, not with the, the way the distribution is set up. They essentially make this...
So if you come to my house and I've ordered something, I'm need to give you cash, don't I?
You will give the delivery driver some cash and he will take it.
All right, now you're going to, he's going to take that cash back to your place. What are you going to do with it?
We're going to put it in the safes, which are, they will have safes in their vehicles, so all they will do is put the money in the safes. And then at the end of the shift, the manager will come out, take the box out with a security guard, and they will take it back to the safe room.
So it's the whole safe that moves?
All right, so now you've got all this massive amount of cash in your safe room, correct?
Correct.
Now what do we do?
Now we, uh, when we fill that, that num, that amount's gotten too high, we will probably have armed security guard pick it up and take it to the bank or the credit union of which we...
Just like most businesses that handle...
I don't know this stuff, so you're going to have to help me here.
They would hire a group service or some sort of armored vehicle that would come and...
All right, so you've got all this cash, and now a bank of your choosing at a later date is going to accept this cash. And you're not quite sure if it's a credit union or a bank that's going to work with the Secretary of State to get this approved? This is kind of a nebulous deal, correct?
Yes, I think everybody in this industry is kind of fighting the same battle, where it's like you get in with a bank for a little bit and then you might end up having to change it.
You just kind of hop around until...
So when you come up with the figures, say you're going to do four million dollars a year, where does that come from? You don't even have a bank account to determine whether it is you're creating here. I mean...
That came from the consulting with Green Wolf, who has had the state licensed facility since the beginning of this year and then has had a pre-Ico dispensary for years prior to this.
So a consultant gave you your sales figures? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I mean, he helped us out. We, what we did is we took Bellflower and the surrounding cities that touch Bellflower in it and took how many people in those cities were eighteen and over. And I think there was roughly about six hundred and fifty thousand. Considering that some were going to go recreational, some didn't do that, something like that, we assumed that Bellflower would have a two and a half percent of that market share, which would be roughly around fourteen thousand, fifteen thousand people. With the four dispensaries that were available, we took that number, we decided that we would be twenty-five percent of the Bellflower's market, which took us to around the four thousand patients per month. And Bell, and Green Wolf told us that on average, those patients spend around a hundred dollars a visit.
But when you draw your circle around your, your potential dispensary, that encompasses other cities, correct?
Yes, that encompasses the six, what we actually call the six cities that touch it, Norwalk, Artesia, Lakewood and all that, and Long Beach included too.
Now, all those cities have the same proclivity to purchase marijuana and cannabis?
As of right now, I think Long Beach is the only one that has allowed any retail or delivery of any sort. So Norwalk, I think you guys know, and Artesia and all them, any of their customers, we would assume, would come to Bellflower and any.
You were pretty passionate about what you said about that you believed that cannabis was a real advantage in our world, correct?
I honestly do.
And right, and so that's the, the medicine, the medical cannabis, what you feel that passionate about. Do you have the same passion for the recreational side of it?
I do. I believe that anything in excess is a bad thing. You can have too much coffee, you can have too much water. I believe, and I personally would rather, at the end of the night, have cannabis instead of an alcohol beverage. I believe, and I personally would rather, at the end of the night, have cannabis instead of an alcoholic beverage. At my age, I don't back bounce, bounce back like I used to from alcohol and I don't have the time to be hungover or feeling bad the next day. I, I believe it's truly, uh, something healing, it's, finding understanding in cannabis has been a hard venture through my life and it, offering such healing properties has brought understanding with my grandparents, with my parents, with my family members that maybe I felt like I've had to hide my advocacy from, but being able to share the healing and drop lotions off to my grandma or bath bombs to my aunts, um.
No, and that's all cool with the medicinal advantage, but when we get to the recreational side, which the state has really made a line in the sand as to what the differences are.
Right.
I wonder how you respond if and when the recreational part becomes available. Is that something you would go forward with, you'd say, no, listen, the medicinal, we're noble people here, we're trying to help sick those? We're not trying to help anybody just feel good about themselves because we don't like liquor.
I, I believe recreation is the way of the future and I think that most people don't know that they are healing from cannabis until they use it recreationally. I personally didn't know of its healing properties until I used it recreationally in my younger years and then found through it that I self-medicate with cannabis before I knew that I was self-medicating. When I was stressed, when I was ill, when I couldn't eat, when I had pramps, I would turn to cannabis. So me using it recreationally opened my eyes to a world of healing that I didn't know existed. My experience with cannabis and manufacturing and cultivation has shown me how many different ways I can use it by separating it, by adding it back in different values, by, um, using the entourage effect where the terpenes from the cannabis um, would offer as much healing. For instance, lavender is calming, they share terpenes with cannabis, adding a calming effect to the THC, the CBD, CBA and all the other compounds. I'm really excited to be on the forefront of an exploding time in the cannabis industry and I think recreation is the way of the future for the world and not just California in general. So I'd have to say that John and I will both agree that recreation would be the best option for us.
All right, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, I appreciate you guys' time.
Thank you.
Thank you, City.
All right, that wraps up Joint Forces. Now Bellflower Medical is next, so the proprietor of the. Oh.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as we briefly discussed at the outset, so your individual ranking sheet should reflect that Joint Forces is currently ranked number one since it's the only one that is presented.
Yes. Good.
All right, it's your, you have the floor now, yes?
Thank you. Hello, hello, hello everyone, hello Mayor, Mayor Potem, Councilmember Coops. Uh, I know everyone has worked very hard on this whole cannabis initiative and, uh, I have a feeling there's gonna be a lot more work ahead of us.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, I'm definitely ready to, to do my part. I am going to be the operator for Bellflower Medical Wellness, Mr. Lee's the property owner. Before, uh, current location is, was Mings, I think, uh, they've got people in the city call it Mings. This is what it looks like now. Mr. Lee tried very hard to, to keep this business in operation. Uh, I think I said in the last meeting, he was losing close to ten thousand dollars a month and, and he's owned this property for quite a while. But after, after you lose ten thousand dollars a month, you kinda have to make a, make a decision. And what was more damaging to him wasn't even the money, it was more of the, uh, damage to his reputation. He's, uh, well-known in the food distribution business and having a, a, a restaurant that wasn't rated highly and also losing money is just not something that he wants to be a part of. We were, our business proposal with Mr. Lee was to do something with the property. When we found out it was zoned for the Bellflower Cannabis Business Permits. And, and around summer of last year is when we, we started talking with Mr. Lee and, and we came up with this idea of, of doing something with the property. It is, it is a true retail space, it is a true retail space, it is something where you would find a Starbucks or a CVS Pharmacy. We believe, we believe moving forward, retail or space visibility is very important to, to the business. As you all know, recreational was brought, you know, before, uh, mentioned before, uh, when I was here was, um, recreational is upon us now. And Bellflower is allowing medical and there is a competitive difference. And I would say recreational has competitive edge and you need visibility, you need people to be able to see, okay, this is the shop that you go to. It is down, is on Bellflower Boulevard, on Cedar. This is our proposed renovation, we wanna use modern construction with, uh, with, uh, updated woods, you know, very green friendly. It is, uh, something that we wanna be proud of. As Mr. Budz mentioned, you know, our location would be a gateway to the city. It's right on Bellflower Boulevard, south of us is Lakewood and I think it's something very presentable and something that Bellflower would be proud of is, would be our primary objective. We have ample parking, twenty-two dedicated parking spaces. We, our estimation for first year is gonna be about three hundred patients a day, so we need all those parking spaces. It is dedicated parking spaces, we're not sharing them with any other business, any other entity. And, and, you know, I think it is, I think we are having the parking spaces to, to meet the demand that the city, Bellflower and the surrounding cities will, will ask of us. This is the, the interior, we wanna make it very warm and comforting, something that appeals to more professionals, uh, more affluent professionals. Something that they can feel like they can come into and, and be relaxed. Our location, one seven eight one two, Bellflower Boulevard, the prime location, we are very close to Lakewood. We're close to Artesia, Norwalk and Cerritos. Again, we, we, our goal is to attract as many Bellflower and surrounding citizens in neighboring cities as much as possible. It is, it is our, I might believe, the key to increasing average sales transactions. Uh, our, our three hundred patients a day at fifty dollars per transaction, approximately four point five million dollar gross. If we use other people's numbers, if the average transaction is a hundred dollars per visit, you can look at nine million dollars. But it is, it is going to be the key to, to increasing the, the revenue and, and generating the most sales tax for, for the city of Bellflower. Our public benefit, I've been coming to these, uh, these meetings for a while now and I think hiring as many Bellflower residents as possible would have the most tangible and immediate effect for the city. From my experience in, in doing a lot of retail and operating, uh, retail businesses and owning retail businesses, you wanna hire people and give them good wages and they will immediately spend the money. They'll eas- they'll, they'll take your paycheck and go out the door and spend the money at the, at the nearest food or apparel store. So we believe that is gonna be the, the main benefit that we can help, uh, with, contribute to the city of Bellflower. We also plan on doing annual contribution to the city of Bellflower Parks and Recreation Department, their senior citizen programs. We do, we wanna do an annual contribution to the Kingdom Causes Homeless Program. I know homelessness is an issue in the city of Bellflower as in surround, and also in the surrounding cities. Uh, our, we want to contribute one percent of annual gross to, to charitable causes. Since we are the owners of the property, it is our, in our interest to renovate and maintain the property. We're not, you know, leasing, we're not renting, it is something that if we take care of, we, we, we repaved the, the parking lot is something that adds value to the property and it is in our interest to, to maintain the property and make it look as best as possible. And lastly, good neighbor, you know, I plan on being there five days a week. You know, I'm available to listen to, to my neighbors, to the city. If there's any complaints or issues regarding noise or, or littering or, or, you know, smells, it's, uh, I, I make myself available and, and I'm here to listen. Leadership, Mr. Lee has a food distribution business. He owns currently forty percent market share in Southern California, so he basically sells foods to restaurants. And, and he's, and is a true immigrant story, came here with, with one hundred, two hundred dollars and he's built a, a, a large business and, and I rely, I'm gonna rely on him for his leadership and his experience. I have over fifteen years of retail experience, uh, online and physical storefronts. Most recently, I operated and managed two pre-Ico dispensaries in, in Southern California. It's, uh, their names are Treetop and CHC. I have a lot of retail experience and this is something that I feel like I am fully capable of. And the last thing I wanna bring up is, uh, you know, this was talked about already and, and, and something that people kinda gloss over but unless you're actually involved in the cannabis industry at this level, you'll never see this. And this banking issue is a problem and, and, and not just with deposits, not with credit card transactions, but actual mortgages on these properties. You know, most properties, because of the prices, there, there's a mortgage on it. And when it's time to renew these mortgages, the bank will usually ask, who are your tenants? You know, I wanna see your rent rolls. And when the bank finds out that, hey, one of the tenants is a cannabis business, they will most likely ask the landlord to either evict the tenant or tell the landlord to find a new source of funding. And this happens many times in our industry, this is why a lot of, uh, dispensaries are not located in prime real estate locations. They're located in small off-streets, uh, they're located in buildings that aren't necessarily in the best shape and it's, and many times retail locations have to constantly change locations to find a landlord that's, that's willing to work with them. There are solutions to, to this mortgage problem and, and in terms of, uh, private lending. But what happens is that the interest rate is now ten, eleven, twelve percent, which is gonna be two or three times what the average mortgage interest rate is. And that cost is passed on to, to, to the, to the tenant. So they are, expect, they're already paying above average market rent. And to meet the, to, to meet the, the increased interest rate, you're looking at paying maybe two or three times their, their rents now. And this happens very frequently with, in our industry. So these tenure leases that, that, that you guys are requiring, they sound good, but in actual practice, I mean, there's a lot of ways to get it. We're all, we're all businessmen here, there's a lot of ways to get out of leases. And, and having the bank evict, tell you that, hey, you need to evict this tenant because we're not gonna renew your, renew your lease or your mortgage is definitely one way and I've seen it happen many times. Uh, we don't have that problem, uh, Mr. Lee owns the property. And we have one less thing to worry about, uh, we have the same banking issues like everyone else. You know, what to do with cash, these are all things that, that we all struggle with, but this doesn't apply to us. Thank you for your time, I'm here to answer any questions, any, anything you want clarity on, any questions?
Yes, um, Mr. Lee, can you show the, um, uh, the store, the dispensary portion?
Yes.
I'm gonna answer the same question, okay. So, um, in the layout, and can you go back one slide?
Yes.
So where's the entrance, where, so that's the main entrance of the parking lot, right?
And that's the patient intake area.
Intake.
So what you see right here is not what they first see.
So what would I see if I'm a customer?
It is a small lobby.
As coming in?
Yeah, it's a small lobby, uh, with chairs where they can come in, provide their, their recommendation and their driver's license and then the sitting area and, and as, as the queue goes, goes on, they'll, they'll be invited to, to this area. So we don't have a picture, we don't have a, a mockup of the patient intake area.
So there's gonna be a physical division between the, the lobby area where the people, where customers check in?
Yes.
And then behind the store?
Yes.
So to speak, okay. Now flip the, the picture on the Artesia, uh, on the Bellflower side.
On the Bellflower side?
Bellflower side. There you go. So there, is there a door on this side here?
Yeah, I think there is a door, I don't, I think when we get to the actual construction of it.
So what's gonna happen to this door?
Yeah, we might have to remove the door.
So it's gonna be enclosed?
Yeah, so, so the only access would be through the parking lot.
So the only access is to this main door here?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, there, there won't be any visibility of Bellflower Boulevard at all?
Uh, what do you mean by visibility?
Um, like door, like windows, nothing?
No, uh, will not be any doors.
Okay, so this will be closed off?
Yes.
Okay. Um, can you, can you expand more on your retail experience related to dispensaries?
Yes, I've, uh, pre, Treetop, Los Angeles and CHC are, are both pre-Ico dispensaries. Um, they, I was brought on board, uh, to, to, to oversee the grand opening and the daily day activities of both those businesses. Uh, when my contract expired, I moved on to other things.
So how, how long we, did you work there?
Oh, almost a year.
Almost a year.
Yeah.
So what exactly did you do in terms of opening a business, hiring?
Marketing strategies, uh, compliance with, with, with city licenses, uh, managing the menus, uh, specials. Yeah, everything, everything, uh, from the, from cleaning to, 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 uh, making sure enough inventory was, uh, was in-house.
So you were the manager of the dispensary?
Yes.
Okay, and after that, you move on to another dispensary?
Yes.
Okay, which one is this?
We, I worked at Treetop first and then after that was CHC.
So what did you do at CHC?
Same thing.
Same thing?
Yeah, and that, and that business, I, uh, was responsible for the grand opening. So I had to, to promote and advertise that this place was, uh, opening up. It was a relaunch of a existing business, so I had to note, you know, be active on social media, uh, manage the grand opening, had to bring in, uh, like vendors and, and, yeah, it was, uh, it was very complicated.
So how many employees did you have at CHC?
About ten.
Ten, okay. And how many customers and others did you see per day?
When I left, we're at about a hundred and fifty.
Per day?
Yes, which is, is not enough. Yeah, there are two hundred patients, you, you wanna be in the three, around the three hundred patients a day, that is really the sweet spot. Asking people to spend a hundred dollars each trip is, is not easy, it's not easy. So you have to either make it by volume or you have to run specials to increase the average transaction po- uh, and traction price, average transaction price.
And you mentioned about advertising, so how did you advertise the business?
That was under, so that was for CHC, a lot of social media, a lot of social media. I, I did not, do not feel it was the most successful, I think for, for Bellflower location, it would be more traditional advertising, billboards, a lot of signage. We, I've learned a lot from, from, from doing these openings before or working at these dispensaries and I think our, I really believe that cannabis, uh, dispensary or retail location is a, is a neighborhood institution, it really is. It's not, you, everyone wants to be famous and fancy and have, oh, I have a hundred thousand followers. It really, it, it really exists to serve the needs of the community. But with that said, you wanna stick with traditional advertising, you know, signs, you know, billboards, all the rage. And note, to notify people that live in that area that, hey, we're open and we're nearby.
Are you gonna have some kind of a door hangers or flyers in the neighborhood, is that what you're suggesting?
Seems like it, yeah, seems like it, you know, our, our, our goal, since we're so close, we're very close to Lakewood. We, you know, I think it's definitely, you know, all signs pointing toward us, I think that really is the best way to do it.
Okay, um, talking about, um, parking.
Yes.
You mentioned that you have twenty-four, if I recall correctly, twenty-four parking spaces?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two parking spaces, so if you're seeing about three hundred customers per day?
Yes.
All the spaces will be utilized?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so.
That's a good thing.
Where would your employees park?
Probably on the street.
On the street?
The good thing is that, well, a street park, the good thing is that we have time to figure it out. You know, we're, we don't expect three hundred patients immediately, so they will take up some of the employees, will take up some of the, the parking, uh, that we have already. But as the, as the number of patients grow, we can find other solutions for parking for employees.
Okay, so in the meantime, if you, if you, um, see this number of customers on day one, your employees will be parking on Bellflower Boulevard?
No, not on Bellflower, more on Cedar.
On Cedar?
Cedar, yeah.
It's even worse, Cedar.
Yeah, uh, Cedar, I understand, I understand, but there's a, there's an empty lot right across from us, there's a car wash there, but I don't think it's even operational. There's no one, there's no one there and ob- obviously across the street on Bellbo- on Bellflower Boulevard are these auto body, uh, businesses.
You know, that's, parking at Cedar sits very tight already.
Yes, 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 but we're right, obviously not deep into the residential, but when I, I've been there multiple times and there seems to be a lot of ample parking because there's just, you know, not many businesses, uh, open in that area. Uh, Mr. Mr. Fred just notified me, or he informed me that, that, um, that part of Bellflower Boulevard, there's gonna be In-N-Out, Baskin Robbins and there's already Golden Corral there and we, you know, we, we do plan on expecting many customers, many patients.
Well, In-N-Out is further north and Golden Corral is further north, there's gonna be Cedar and.
Yeah, but they're gonna drive.
Bellflower Boulevard.
Yeah, of course, they're gonna be driving, uh, on Bellflower Boulevard, driving toward those, uh, locations, I believe.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Coops, any questions?
Mr. Coops, any questions?
I didn't know we were getting to Baskin Robbins.
You're the guy, that's news to me.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, it's great news, I think it's, you know, it's really.
Where's it going?
Yeah.
Right next, right next to the cannabis place.
Yeah, it would be, it would be great for us. And Fred, yeah, yeah, Fred notified, told me that it was, uh, in that, near that Golden Corral, where, where after they do the, the widening of the, of the Boulevard. And it's great, it's, it's great, I mean, these are all the things.
When they come to City Hall, let us know.
Yeah, these are all the things that you want, these are all the things that you want, so, you know.
The manager doesn't even know about it.
City manager's holding out on us.
He doesn't know about it.
The parking, the parking is something that just can't be overlooked. I mean, you need to have ample parking. This is, this is retail, this is a retail business. As going forward, this is, this is, CBS has to, you know, advertise, Starbucks has to advertise, McDonald's has to advertise, you need signage. And to me, I'm not gonna stand here and make crazy, uh, predictions for, for revenue, because that's, that's, yeah, you guys have already seen that. But you need visibility, you need visibility. And being on a side street, being in an auto body, uh, park, being in a multi-tenant light industrial, I mean, I have seen it before and it just doesn't seem to work. You need to bring in, you need to bring in pay, you need to bring in customers.
Where is there auto body in your area?
I think right across, Bellflower Boulevard, right across.
You mean that abandoned suburban Pontiac, is that what you're talking about?
Right behind it, right behind it.
Yeah, right next to, yeah, right next to.
There's an auto repair back there.
There's a lot of, there's, no, I don't wanna, I don't wanna go back, but there's a lot of parking, unused parking, uh, on the street.
So on the building here, this is the side view looking on Cedar Street. Is there a rear entry to your building?
Yes, there is.
How do you, how do you get there from?
Through the side.
Over here, is there?
Yeah, through the side, yeah.
So you're gonna load your building from this side over here, correct?
Yes.
All right, and, uh, I guess, uh, Mr. Sanzinez indicated that our concern for, uh, onsite parking is pretty important.
Yes, yes.
And, uh, Bellflower Boulevard and Cedar Street are already somewhat impacted, so we're, we're concerned for such.
Of course, of course.
You, now, have you been here, I know you've been here more than once. Have you been here every time that we've had a discussion about this property? Or was there ever another representative here?
Oh, I was here the whole time. I've been here for times that you guys don't even talk about cannabis, just that, you know, I've, I've.
So are you the guy that the first time you came in here said, we lost five hundred thousand dollars last year in, in our, uh, Ming's restaurant? You remember saying that?
No, that's not me.
No, okay, 'cause today it, it went to ten thousand. I guess that's, I'm trying to make sure your, your stories are consistent.
No, that's, that sounds, no, that's not me.
All right.
Yeah.
I'd, so that's why I thought maybe I should give you the benefit of the doubt, it might have been some of your, uh, other.
I started coming around December.
Okay. How about, uh, when you think about, um, the operation that you have there? And you mentioned fourteen to fifteen employees, is that what you thought?
Uh, we're looking at.
Or is that how many you've had in other employees?
In other look, in other businesses, locations, yeah, other businesses.
So the experience that you've had, what is your total number of years of experience running a dispensary?
Two.
So two years?
Yes.
And that's the immediate past two years, or did you do it and then get away from it and then come back?
I think of the, when I was managing or operating, uh, C H C, that was, I ended like six months ago, my contract ended six months ago. And I've been focused, or no, almost a year ago, so summer of two thousand seventeen. And I've been working on this since then.
So you believe because this gentleman owns this property and I, he owns it now, the tree, you know, anybody can own property, is it paid for? Is that what you were trying to indicate? It's a paid-for entity?
Yes.
He has no debt?
I believe he, he has a, less than two hundred thousand dollar mortgage on the, on the property.
Now, because it's a commercial loan, you're concerned that it might be called and they would not renew it because it's a cannabis operation? Is that a potential?
Happens a lot, yes.
Huh.
Happens a lot, because, yeah. Most people don't know until the, 'cause the, the renewal happens, you know, one, two, three years later. And then when the renewal happens, they'll ask to see if, you know, are you, who are the tenants? They'll see the rent rolls.
But since he owns or controls forty percent of the food distribution in this area, he could pay the note off, correct?
Yes, yes.
So that shouldn't be an issue?
Yes. We're all kinda waiting on this thing, you know, hard, it's hard for him to, you know, I don't, I wouldn't ask anyone to spend, uh, money on, on, on something that was losing money, that's very difficult.
Let's put a picture up of how the property looks currently.
Yeah.
Are you proud of that?
No, no, this looks crazy, this looks crazy.
Isn't there something you could do to make that look better in the interim?
That's, uh, you know, that's something that, that Mr. Lee has.
I mean, that doesn't show well when you're trying to ask us for something to, uh, on a permit.
Correct, correct, I agree.
And that's on Bellflower Boulevard?
Yes.
In an area that we're trying to do wonders with?
Yes.
And a potential real estate guy comes down, sees this, he says, what am I doing here?
You're correct, no, you're correct. I wanna do something, this, this, it hurts me, 'cause I spent a, I've spent a lot of time on this project. And I wanna do something that you guys can be proud of, I really do. Um, I've, I've only been, I've been brought on board for the, for the cannabis part. Um, I have, I.
How long does the property look like that?
Probably around two months now.
When you closed Ming's, I guess that's when it began that, uh.
I didn't close Ming's, I didn't.
No, whoever closed Ming's, uh, when they closed, then the property developed into the site that we see now, correct?
Yes, yeah.
That brought, that bothers me.
Oh, it should, it bothered, I can't even look at it, it bothers me too.
I mean, how can I trust you to run a clean operation when then you're representing something that looks like that?
Uh, but I'm, I'm only representing the property and its potential, I don't, I don't, I don't, I have nothing to do with Ming's. You know, this is, this is.
Well, the guy that does is standing about, uh, one foot away from you, I would think he'd have some responsibility here.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's.
Now, he's gonna own the property and he's gonna own the operation, correct?
Yes.
And you're the employee that's gonna run it?
Operator, yes.
Well, then you shouldn't feel bad about that, he should feel bad about that.
Okay.
Do you see my point?
I understand, I understand your point, yes.
That's all I have.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, so you worked for Tree Top as a manager approximately a year?
Yes.
And they just, and that was your first experience with cannabis and they hired you in as the manager to run it?
Yes.
That I just, where did you get your experience? Is it just basic manager skills that they just, I would think, you, you gotta kinda, if you're gonna order cannabis and plan to it and you kinda need to be raised in cannabis, I would guess? To know the industry, I mean, you gotta know what, I'm baffled, I've been having the education for the last six months here, just being on the dais. But I, I just, I just, I guess you marketed yourself as a cannabis consultant and these people hired you for a short-term consulting?
No.
No? So explain, explain to me how you got there?
Of course. I have, uh, I have many years doing, uh, women's retail. I was one of the first online stores selling women's shoes. And I had, uh, around two thousand nine, six, uh, retail locations in, in, in malls, in the Westfield malls. And I have over a hundred employees, eighteen million dollar annual gross. I was brought on board for, because of my expertise with experience, with retail.
So you're good as a business startup, that's your expertise?
Not a business startup, but just how to run it, how to manage people.
How to manage it and get people, te- train people to take over?
It is a commodity, it is a commodity. I do have, you know, personal use with, with cannabis. I've been, you know, I, I also have a lot of experience on the cultivation side as well. But at the end of the day, it is, it is retail, it is a commodity. And, um, you know, I, I believe, I shared a sentiment with the other person before me that cannabis does have healing properties. It is, it is a wonderful drug, but it's also.
So I guess, that's lack of better terms, you, you self-medicate, I guess? Is that for your experience, is what you're saying there? And then you grew a couple plants on your own?
Yes.
Okay, that's where, okay, just wanted to.
Of course, yeah. It's, it's just, you know, it's a product, you gotta do sales, you know, it's, you gotta treat it as such.
Gotcha, so you weren't afraid of it when, to go in and manage a business of that magnitude? So you did about a year at one and then six months at the other, is what I've heard?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, let's see what other, excuse me a minute. Tree Top you said was in L A, the C H C, um, dispensary that was?
In L, in Los Angeles.
In Las Alas, and they were both medical marijuana dispensaries?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay. And you managed all the aspects of the sale of the product from the cannabis weed to the ointments to?
Yes.
The other stuff that goes with it, all the accessories and stuff?
I'm very hands-on, so I, I did sales, you know, did, did everything that, that needs to be done to keep that business operating.
So you'd say you're, you're, one of your strong points is maybe, uh, marketing on the internet?
I don't, I mean, that, that is.
One, one of the strong points, I'm not saying it was all, I mean, it's because you said that you, your prior experience with the women's shoes or whatever, you went online and, and that's kinda what you, you, you kinda navigate that really good, that was one of your strong points.
Yeah, we feel, we feel, uh, for, for Bellflower Medical Wellness, a traditional, uh, advertising strategy would, uh, would be best. That's print ads, billboards.
I, two for one, thought that was the first slide of your presentation, it was not a good movie. And I don't know if I like it better with the green tarps on it? 'Cause you took the green tarps off and it looks.
I wa- I wanted it to look like this, I wanna look like this. You know, it's, 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 it's hard for me to look at. I mean, Fred showed me another picture and it's, it's difficult for us to look at, but it's, you know, it's, it's, you're, it's, uh, the only people that want to buy the property are for the, uh, the C U P.
You have that fence around it right now just to protect the parking lot?
Yeah, from, uh, from the homeless people, yes.
Okay. Well, that's all the questions, why don't we have the, the public, uh, here's from some public testimony at this time? Just go ahead and have a seat and then we'll bring you back up.
Well, he hasn't mentioned what kind of security he's gonna have at that, uh, facility. And he's saying he's donating to charity at one percent, that's forty-eight thousand. And how is it the mortgage company can prevent you, uh, from having a business there if it's now legal? And I'm not quite.
I couldn't answer that one because I've never had that experience.
You know what I mean? That's what I understand. It's a legal business, right? As long as the mortgage company gets paid, it, and it's a legal business, I'm not sure how that, that's, I can understand that when we were having those illegal, uh, businesses. And since he's in the shoe business, uh, is he gonna have, or?
He used to be in the shoe business.
Yeah, I know, but is he gonna, with this, is he gonna have a, a online account where you can order online? Or, uh, create an account with the company and just order and just pick up?
We can ask him.
You know, 'cause that might help increase three hundred customers a day, at fifty, that's fifteen thousand a day, you know?
Excuse me? Fifteen thousand dollars, yeah.
Fifteen thousand, yeah, at fifty dollars a day, three hundred, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I wanna interject, all of the security plans, cash management and, uh, the other handling plans were all submitted previously through original applications for all these candidates today. So we, they've been reviewed and, uh, and, and passed by the reviewers of those plans.
And he's, oh, is it a, a green door of all, all these things, or they can, now it's business, they have to, they can, uh, use another color for the door? Or just, it still has to be a green door if you're marijuana?
I think they paint the door any color they want.
Okay.
Until we get a color palette.
Okay, because I remember last time, well, I mean, before it became legal, you can tell where cannabis was there, the green door. Now that's, you, you know what I'm saying? In the past, it was a green door, you can know, that's where.
Green door, green cross, I don't know, I'd have, I've never caught on the green door thing, but I've, I know what the green crosses mean.
We took a trip to Denver to learn that one.
Green lights too, yeah.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much, anybody else?
My name is Chris Castillo. Like, the gentleman here with the gray shirt, I don't know if he, he mentioned his name, uh, but the other guy, Mr. Lee, he is basically the father or the business owner, uh, the property owner right there of Ming's. So I used to live right there, uh, at the apartment, at the apartments, right next to Ming's.
Can you rewind that? That, that would fast forward, you know, it's trying to connect the dots, I'm sorry.
Do the family again.
Start over.
The guy that was speaking, you know, the presenter, uh.
Right.
He didn't say his name, I didn't hear his name.
Oh, that was Derek Lee, I thought.
No, that's who we said.
Mr. Liu, Mr. Liu, Mr. Liu.
Mr. Liu, it's him, right. So he owns, uh, Ming's, right? I used to live at apartments right down the street, right? There's like a convention center or something like that, like a hall.
That's the Eagles Hall, I mean.
Eagles Hall, yeah.
Right, right. So I used to live in the apartments right next door. I used to, you know, I went to Mayfair High School, so I grew up there in that area many, many years, anyhow. So my family, we've been going to Ming's and ever since we were little, it's always been very empty, right? So like you mentioned, they're losing about ten thousand dollars a month, right? So first, uh, when I was trying to do, uh, you know, a dispensary, I was trying to apply at the city of Long Beach. Unfortunately, I ran out of time, uh, you know, it's very, um, everyone's trying to get into this business. So when I was going around the city looking for a property, uh, the property owners that I contacted, they say, you know what? Other people already approached me, so if they don't get the license, I'll give you a call. They never gave me a call, you know, there's just so many people that are applying. Anyhow, Bellflower, like I said, since I lived here, I contacted the city, say, hey, you know what? Are you guys actually, uh, you know, in, doing the applications? They say, you know what, we're currently in the process, you know, uh, if you want, you can leave your phone number and we'll get you, uh, you know, information as we go along. This is last year around summer, when you guys started having your, you know, your council meetings. So what I started doing was started going around your map and finding locations that actually qualified. After going to those, you know, qualifications, all the requirements that you guys needed as far as parking and all that stuff, uh, I ended up thinking, you know what? The properties that were at was, that were either for lease or for sale, they were either too big or out of my budget, you know, uh, with me and my father. Uh, so what I ended up doing is I had, uh, I think outside the box. So I ended up having a, basically I saw Ming's as basically like a, an opportunity for me, since it was a dead business, you know, as my, as far as like what I was concerned, right? So what I did was, um, there was no, uh, information to contact the owner. I had to call the L A County, you know, to get some property information, which I got like the L O C to, you know, to them. I ended up speaking to Mr. Lee's son, right? Mr. Lee's son basically acted as the owner of the property, right? Mr. Lee's a retired person, uh, doesn't manage it anymore, his son is basically the one doing all the operations. At that moment, I basically presented him the idea, like you said, uh, the presenter stated that once they were informed of this opportunity, well, that, that person was me. I was the one who, I presented them the opportunity to do this, uh, marijuana business, right? At that point, I told him, you know what, um, I want you to know that I'm serious. So I had my father and me, we met up at the restaurant at Ming's last year before the meeting in September. Uh, and I basically introduced him, you know what, I wanna do business with you, you know, you're the property owner. And, uh, we're willing to offer two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars for the business. At that point, he said, okay, that's fine, let's do it. From there, I say, you know what, why don't I make you more a part of this, why don't you come with me to the next meeting? He, he came, um, uh, his son came with them, we also came with the other guy. And he saw the opportunity at that point. We had, uh, no contract or nothing done, so I said, you know what, why don't we, uh, you know, come to the meeting? After that, four days later, I followed up with his son, um, and basically he told me that unless I offered more money, that he was not gonna do the business with me, which you can see now, they're doing it on their own, right? So they were not informed of this opportunity. In other words, the city of Bellflower did not let everybody know, hey, you know what, we're accepting applications. That didn't happen. In other words, if I had not presented them the opportunity, they would not even know. They'd still be at Ming's, losing money every month. And that's basically why I'm here, okay? Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Were you here that night, the guy said he lost five hundred thousand?
Yeah, I believe that was, uh, uh, I wasn't.
Tell me I'm not crazy.
I, I, that didn't speak, I did not speak for them, uh, I just.
But you were here to listen to the testimony.
Right, right, yes, that was wild, I guess.
Thank you.
I do have a bit of a concern about the parking. We have so many problems with parking. You guys are posting no parking signs to protect the tenants, and I don't know that this location is gonna be a good thing because where are they gonna park? You know? And on top of that, I have to make this comment. They don't seem to have a very good sense of community when they can leave that kind of a mess for so long on that property. So, those would be my concerns, just saying.
Thank you.
My name is Craig Mezowicz. I came up here to say that I'm Mr. Lee's neighbor, and so I can answer your question about the green and why everything was taken down. On that same street, there's a Farmers Insurance Agency that's been there for sixty years. The guy that runs it now is a name named Mark Renshaw, and he called the police every day on Mr. Lee or Mr. Liu because twelve different homeless people had made an encampment inside there. So, it didn't matter, he had the highest fence available, didn't matter that he covered it so no one could see it. Bellflower has a no barbed wire policy, so there was no way for them to secure the property. So, guess what happens? They come to my property next door. I share a driveway with...
So, you're south of Mings?
I'm one-seven-eight-one-six and one-seven-eight-one-eight.
Which is south, south of them, right?
I share a driveway, correct. That driveway has been let go because of the property situation and with the sewage, because it used to be one property and divided. If they use the toilet on a regular basis, it backs up into my kitchen. So, I've spent over a thousand dollars just trying to solve the plumbing on the problem, on the property, and with the amount of homeless that had taken encampment there because he tried to protect it, I have female employees that won't come to work. So, I inherited a building that has thirty-seven code violations. I'm down to under seven, and I'm trying to do the best I can. Selfishly, I'm here to hear what they have to say because I want my neighbors to succeed, but unless something different happens and the city allows some other things to happen, that property will never be a successful property.
But your lot is a separate lot from Mings.
It shares a driveway.
But it has an easement with the driveway that you both get to use it. And there's parking in the back, right?
Not much.
Does it go to the alleyway between the Eagles? Does it come around?
Yeah, what happens is you go between the Eagles is between Mings and the Eagles, and then it comes back into a mixed-use building, which is the one I'm in, the two lower buildings. Then there's apartment upstairs with a rooftop, and then there's the insurance agency, and then there's somebody that I've never seen in eight months there of cleaning up my building. And then there's the glass and window place next to that. And then you get that parking lot where the liquor store, the laundromat, the donut shop is.
You're the property owner, but you don't have a business there?
I'm the newest tenant.
You're newest tenant, okay.
So, you're in the Magdalena's building?
I'm in the old Magdalena's building. And we just found a secret room, by the way. If you ever ate there, I'll be able to tell you that pretty soon.
Wow.
They never threw away anything.
Really? The secret room.
Yeah, we have receipts back, we found receipts yesterday back to nineteen fifty-two.
Wow, wow.
And everybody's credit card information in case you guys want to hide something right now. I've seen your name a couple of times now. Yeah, so it's a tough corner, it's a tough building. I've been in the industry for six years, I'm not currently in it, but I can tell you this, you're up against a tough task, and all these guys that are presenting have part of the equation, but not all of it, and hope you can help figure out the rest of it.
What business are you in?
I'm the largest distributor of hemp infused and hemp-derived products in the western United States.
I wish I knew what that meant.
It's technically part of the cannabis space.
Talking in a foreign language. Remember hemp rope? Yeah, well, I don't think you sell a rope out of there.
You know that stuff you smoked in college, I sell it now.
It's a brave new world, isn't it?
That broke the monotony.
Largest hemp this wire in the whole United States.
I'd just like to make a short comment on this one here. Basically...
Peter's getting hap back there.
When you're talking about mortgage money, in order to discourage something, to sway something versus full ownership of the property or something, it doesn't make sense to me to even go there. But the big thing is what you brought up, Mr. Coops. If that thing has been sitting there as an eyesore for over a year, waiting for this cannabis thing to come to life in Bellflower, I don't think that's much of a friendly type of a business or a friendly type of a neighbor that I'd want. That's my personal opinion of it. And to have just one distribution thing, and that's it, I don't see the support of it. And Sonny, you brought up the thing when you're talking Cedar Street. The parking is terrible around there, so if you gotta go off-site. And to do door hangers for advertisement and billboards, the answer is no.
Come on, anybody else wishing, while I was doing that, I got a question to the city attorney? Not attorney, the city manager, maybe, or anybody who wants to answer it. Parking, the parking and the original applications of these three entities that were here tonight in their packet, parking for these locations have been vetted already. Is that correct and got it?
They were vetted and...
Right, at a different level. It's a refresher course for us, too, is... Yes, sir, what's your name?
Yeah, good night to everybody, my name is Anaro Castillo. And I just wanted to bring up something about my son explaining earlier about this location in Bellflower. And I want to point out that he's telling the truth, right? That this place has been basically that business for many years. Maybe more than fifteen years that I know that place is always empty. Maybe they're doing for a living like any business that is not doing really well. And therefore, my son did it right before getting to this point. It was really important for them right now because he was trying, because he was... We own a barbershop in Long Beach, so let me explain something. My barbershop, I've been in the business for fourteen years. And three years that my son started working, my business as telemarketing, my numbers tripled in three years, basically. So, I try my son, what he's doing is something that he believes, and he works for it. And like he mentioned, he tried to go in the city of Long Beach, he couldn't make it right time. But he told me, Dad, there's an opportunity in Bellflower, I want to go for it. Okay, start doing your work. And he did everything that he needs to do. He did a lot of things before he raised this person. And before that, this person didn't have any idea about the business. He had no clue about it. And he started, he found out his information, he called them. He met with a person, with Derek, like two times before I met with Derek. And he told me, we're serious in the business, we probably, we can do it. I know, and my son proposed him. You just let us do it, lease the property, sell the property, or be part of the business. My son told him, whatever you want, whatever you decide. You want to listen to us, listen to us. You want to be part of the business, we can do part of the business, or sell the property to us. And he said, well, let's talk about it. And my son started working with Derek. And then we came together because my son told him, we're serious. Maybe because he saw John, maybe he didn't trust him. He said, no, I'm serious, and we want to talk to him. And we explained to him, everything that my son spoke to him is true because he have already reached for all the info. And what I want to say, the second that we meet with him, with Derek, we shared hands about everything that we were talking about, like, it wasn't like real that we was speaking at that time. After he came to the hearing, a couple of weeks he changed. Oh, I got another person that's offering me double, but it's not true. It was not, it is not true. So, the only concern that I... Because I saw the property, after they came to the meeting, they shut out the business because they were not making money. They're not surviving. They're not making for a living. They don't have no money to pay for employers. Why they shut down? Because they're not making money. I got a business, I won't shut down, I'm making money. I pay my employees, I pay everybody. Why shut down my business? No, there's no reason. The only reason that they shut down the business because they don't making money to pay employees. So, the thing is, is that I really would like these people to consider my son job. Because he, because he put them on the table and opened their eyes is what are they trying to do right now? For me, it doesn't affect. For me, not affect. And we proposed them what's very simple and very easy. Lease the property, you're not making money, listen to me. Be part of the business or sell it. Three options we give to them, to the ready. Whichever is fine for him, we take it. Because we're serious. We're not playing with nobody. So, the only thing that I would like is, I know that everything is in record right now, that we would like to meet with you. We want to be part of the business.
Sir, need to address it up here, and a contract with them isn't in our purview tonight.
I know.
So, it's only, you know, you have to speak on, you know, this location of being a dispensary.
I just wanted to bring up because it, there's no... If my son didn't contend them, they would not be sitting this time right now, for sure, a hundred percent. So, thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wishing to come forward? Okay, let's get to the applicant, Mr. Lee. I don't know if he wrote down any of those questions that we're talking...
I remember the big ones. I remember the big ones. I mean, our neighbor, I mean, I listened to him talk, and wow. Over here. Wow, wow, that's tough, you know, it's tough, it's tough, it's really tough. It's, I know you guys, I know everyone has an opinion of what should be done with Mings. I know you guys all refer to as Mings, but that's asking an owner to spend a lot of money on a non-income generating business.
We're, no, we're just here for if you should get a dispensary license or not. Get back on track.
The public's comments, you know, about the eyesore and how it looks and how it attracts homeless people, it really, it bothers me.
Well, we're looking at the eyesore as is this what you're gonna be?
Yeah, no, no.
First impression.
No, I don't want, I don't want to be that at all. I do not want to be that at all.
That's why that was brought up.
Yes, of course, yes.
Obviously, we don't feel that alone, we're not alone.
We, our projections, we would spend almost a million dollars renovating the property, and that does include the yearly maintenance, that parking lot needs to be repaved. You need to make money to spend money. You know, that's how I would address the public's comments about the look of how Mings looks right now. You need to generate money to bring it up to everyone's expectations, and...
Well, why don't you brush on, I know parking and security was in your original packet from going through that long meeting back in December. Why don't you just, for a refresher course for everybody, talk about security since when somebody in the public brought that up?
We feel in that location, twenty-four hour security would be best. It is something, not just a benefit for us, but benefit for the neighborhood. It is a well-located, it is something that I think everyone would benefit from if we had twenty-four hour security, and we don't mind spending or spending the money to guarantee the public's a little more safety. And what was the other thing you want me to address?
I think someone mentioned about online ordering.
The parking, the parking, I mean, we have...
Or parking, well, parking was in your parking...
Advertising.
Advertising, online ordering, stuff like that.
So, we have twenty-two dedicated parking spaces. I mean, some people might not feel that's a lot, but...
You meant parking code.
You meant parking code, that's what I was saying, you meant parking code in the original...
Yes, yes, everyone has mentioned that parking is an issue, I mean, there's...
Everybody here has meant their parking.
Yes, yes. And advertising, so I know Anita was against these door hangers, but we will work with the city to find the best solution possible, but we need to do advertising to bring in the estimated number of customers a day. It's something that I know we won't make everyone happy, but we'll try to find something that we can all tolerate. And the last question was, online ordering, no, though, that's not, that's not... Maybe if you want online order and pick up at that location, that might be possible, but no delivery. Yeah, that's not gonna be something that we even think is very viable.
Yeah, I just want to get those answered for the public. I think that was it on my notes that was shared with us tonight. Any other further questions from my colleagues?
No, I'm good.
No.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Can we take a short break?
Yeah, we can.
We have a big volume, too.
Yeah, we're gonna do every page.
Yeah, go ahead and do your ranking, guys.
You're really forcing us to score, huh? That's why it's called four scoring.
Number one being the best, number three being the least. Right. But I mean, if I...
So, the lower, the better?
The lower the number, the better we're doing.
The lower is the winner.
All right.
And we're gonna recess for ten minutes, and I suspect we got a health break coming up. And we're gonna be here for a little longer, so everybody can get up and stretch their legs, and we'll reconvene in ten minutes, which will be nine-thirty-six.
No, we're not gonna do that, Peter. So, why is it there's nothing here? So, if I...
No, that's...
How come there's nothing here?
This is where, this is the meat. So, he's the one, so he's one, so he's two. There's no number three yet.
All right, so put a one here. I would...
Yeah, do it wrong, yeah. So, what it'll do is, it'll be, it's one, one, and so this one will be either, you know, one could be here, one could be there, one could be there, or one could be there, two, three, or it could be one, two, and three. You don't know where it's gonna be. That would be one.
Put a one here.
...
Thirty-five.
They're gonna be talking about that.
Something that it looks like, obviously, after what the city's done, it's, she goes, I want to really want to... Welcome to the city. We're talking, we're... Exactly, that's why we're here, we're talking about, well, some pushing the... You're...
Yeah, yeah, he's like, doing his phone blowing, and he...
I wish I got... I'm taking it. Yeah. Fairly, he has to come down, he's a worker, he's experienced, he's all, like, rusting, or maintaining the home, or maintaining... He's been around here, and I don't... You know, you're... I remember, I'm a Sean.
Come on, now.
Is he? You went to Vegas, right? I drive, right? You're good, and so... I'm ready to jab, stab. Just saying, we're, we're all hoping to have lots of us. We, we started... So, we started, it was bad, it was summer, so Mr. Lee was... We didn't think, we thought we could charge them, we lost the rest of the... Still, it really is... Now, that was not a guy that would have to be like a permanent, like, a real life... Or we may do the premise, we may get... So, it's hard to say. All over there, like, he's like, no, first... We start with things, we're having some... Right, and I said, you forgot, I was gonna raise, well, the most... But I would tell you, this is, it makes me, I feel like, oh, I sit down, every time. I never got to be first.
Yeah, yeah.
You see a lot of me.
Yeah.
So... I, I'm sorry to let you guys... He's out here, probably, maybe, he's... You, you're sitting here, I wasn't... Yeah. Always communicate besides, but I'm... Very, very... Questions? Yeah. I know, it's just crazy that cannabis, I mean, it's... Oh, no worries. Like, or, you know, okay, honestly, well, it's... Yeah, that's why, that's why we have... And that's why we want to pretend, I raise, oh, right, that's why, whatever, and then we have... Council. It's like, it's like, it's like, around. I'm starting to see, uh, all trends, something that I do... I know, it's amazing. You know, I need, I know, I'm going to be, it's not very...
I noticed, because we have always that same hat, you know?
What?
We always had that same hat.
I have two of them, I rotate. Tonight, I wore the brown one, because my shirt had kind of a brown in it, but I have a green one I wear too.
Ready, guys? Okay, let the record show that we reconvened our city council meeting, and the public hearing is still open, and with that note, we'd like to invite E E L Holdings up here and for the presentation.
I want to thank council and staff for the opportunity to present this evening, thank the fellow applicants, I admire the passion.
What's your name?
I'm Elliot Lewis.
Okay.
I'm the owner, manager of E L Holdings LLC.
That's what E E L stands for, huh?
Elliot Evans Lewis, yeah. Areas I want to focus on today are revenue, experience, the location, redevelopment slash life, community benefits, and then after listening to the first two presentations, I'm gonna talk about the banking issue. So, that's just a little bit about us, that's a write-up that we got in the Grenian Gazette. Just a little bit about me, my name's Elliot Lewis, I'm the owner and operator of E L Holdings LLC, from Long Beach, California, lived there for forty years, graduated from Wilson High School. My original background is real estate, got into the cannabis industry approximately five years ago, very hands-on owner, very easy to reach, albeit the guy on the job site all day, pushing the job, meeting with the architect, meeting with the contractor, security company, you name it, if there's any issues from staff or council, you know, I got shops open in Long Beach, they just call me directly on my cellphone, I'm very accessible. One thing that I wanted to touch on in this front page is Mayor Garcia, literally last week, just stopped to buy our shop in Belmont Shores, told our manager it was his favorite location in Long Beach, and brought ten high-level staff members there to show how far the cannabis industry came, so I'm pretty proud of that visit.
Didn't buy?
No.
Staff did.
I assume, if he does, he doesn't do that in public. Here you'll see the applicant experience, we have a five-six-two discount meds, that's in Belmont Shore, alternate therapeutic solutions, I'll be opening in about sixty days, we have approved application at sixteen-hundred Daisy, also a location in Santa Ana, twenty-four-hundred Pullman, we have an approved application at twenty-seven-fifty-one Linwood, the last two are pending. In addition to this list, I just put myself and E L Holdings on there, my wife holds three licenses, one in Yolo County, one acre of outdoor, one in Calaveras County, half acre of mixlight, as well as a retail location in the city of Long Beach. In addition to this, I probably consult on another half dozen to a dozen locations. This is current connected cannabis companies, open locations, you got Belmont Shore, Second Street, Santa Ana, San Jose, Sacramento, San Francisco, and Stockton. We have another two that are essentially vested rights, and then three to five that are pending, kind of in this situation that we're in now. So, I want to focus on the revenue. These are actual numbers, not aspirational, not pro forma, these are real numbers that taxes have been paid on. The Cookies SF, it's a connected store, that was their, their old name, it's twelve-point-two million in revenue, so the city of Bellflower through the Measure B would get six-hundred-eleven-thousand in tax revenue. I think the store that's most liked, the store in Bellflower, would be Connected Sacramento, similar population, demographics, kind of a style of store, that, that, that location gross ten-point-six million, that's five-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand for the city of Bellflower. Connected Stockton, seven-point-five million, three-hundred-and-seventy-seven for city of Bellflower, the Connected San Jose, it's a very tough location, but we wanted to put all the stores in there, that's a four-million-dollar gross, would be two-hundred-and-two-thousand for the city of Bellflower. So, if you took an average of them, that would be eight-point-six million with an estimated revenue for the city of Bellflower, just on the brick and mortar of four-hundred-and-thirty-thousand. The Stockton is medical only, and those numbers are from two thousand and seventeen, I only included the ones that had a full calendar year, so all those were medical in two thousand and seventeen, so there's no recreational use. The Stockton store continues to be medical only, the other three are recreational.
But these numbers are all medical?
All medical, there was no recreational use prior.
Okay, right.
In addition to that, the, we're projecting in Santa Ana and Long Beach, the two thousand eighteen will be the first full calendar year on those, probably around four and a half, five million, with, you know, twenty to thirty percent year-over-year growth, hoping to get to, you know, after three or four years, about eight to ten million. While we're on this subject of revenue, the other thing that I wanted to emphasize is, you know, not only is the revenue numbers from Connected been very impressive, in addition to that, our, our timing of being able to open has been, we have a good track record. In the city of Long Beach, they issued thirty-two licenses, we were second to open, which I'm very proud of, and we were first by far of locations that weren't priority ones, that weren't already existing, in other words, we had a new location, had to do the whole build-out, so we were second to open. In addition to that, my, the retail store that my wife owns, I think it was fourth or fifth to open, so the point to emphasize to the council is, we know the steps of the process, you know, for example, you gotta build your cabinets at the beginning, so when they're ready to be put in, you know, you'll, you'll have them, you know, you gotta get the, pull the security wire at, at a certain time, we have all the contractors and everybody lined up, and if we are lucky enough to be awarded the license in Bellflower, we think we could open right away. What's that?
Define right away.
Well, I mean, some of that depends on the cities, there's, there's different departmental that's used with each city, you know, there's unique features in each city, ID, health department might want something different.
If I can get you a one-week turnaround on building plans, how long will it take you to open?
So, I, I would estimate, depending on how rigorous the inspections are, sixty to ninety days, I think is a, is a fair estimate.
How long did it take from, in Long Beach, on Second Street, from license to open?
Well, the, Long Beach was totally new at the process.
Well, we are too.
Oh, I get it, getting, it took us about ninety days to build it out, getting through the planning department was...
Well, no, they, so once you had the license in your hand to opening...
Well, technically, when you open, you get the...
The license?
The license, but from when we had approved plans...
Approved license, yeah, approved that you're gonna get the license, then...
Right, it's about a ninety-day build-out, it took, it took us about three to six weeks to get through planning, but that was, I mean, sorry, three to six months, but that was as fast as anybody in, in, in the field. The, the other thing that I want to emphasize is our, oops, so those are the revenue numbers, and, and just to add to the revenue issue, you know, like I said, they're not aspirational numbers, those are real numbers, those are track record, historical numbers. The, the location, I think, that we're putting forward, in my opinion, is the, the strongest location, the parcel size is about acre and three-quarters, the building square footage is twenty-one-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifteen, there's eighty-four parking spaces, the dispensary that we're gonna build is essentially a, a superstore, seventy-five-hundred square feet. One thing that I wanted to add is there's legislation right now that's passing through the state level, that it looks like you'll be able to deliver in cities that currently have bans, so a really good benefit, and we've had our eye on this from the beginning when we got that property in, so a really good benefit for the city of Bellflower is Downey, Lakewood, Artesia, all the surrounding cities pretty much have bans, with the exception of, of Long Beach, so we plan, and you'll see later on in the, in the slides, we plan on having vans, and we put in our application that we'll be able to pull in, get loaded, and, and get out, so the, the figures I showed you were for just brick and mortar, we think if we add delivery, it's another twenty-five, twenty, twenty-five percent. On top of that, the really good thing for Bellflower is, the product's gonna get delivered into the neighboring cities, and all the tax revenue is gonna come to Bellflower. One thing that I want to touch on before we switch that got brought up by the other applicants is the banking. So, currently, since we are UFCW in the city of Long Beach, by signing a labor peace agreement and having UFCW employees, I've become a member of essentially their credit union, which is Rancho Federal Credit Union, and because I'm a member, any one of my businesses could also apply, cannabis included, to bank at the, at the credit union. Literally today, my partner just made a large five-figure deposit, they don't have any issues, they're charging us a little bit for making the deposits, and, you know, we're, we're affiliated with the union, so that's kind of how we've been able to do our banking. But here in Bellflower, I think eventually the entire state's gonna be a labor peace state, but whether or not we do a labor peace here in Bellflower or not, because it's a business, because I'm a member of the credit union, I'll be able to bank at Rancho Federal Credit Union.
Explain a labor peace state, state.
So, in Long Beach, all of our workers are union UFCW, United Food and Commercial Worker Employees, so they have a, we have a one-year labor peace agreement with them...
It's not a union, it's a labor peace agreement.
No, it's a union, well, so originally, you have to sign the labor peace agreement, then they, they get a meet, and I think by like fifteen-three, it passed, essentially all the stores in Long Beach are gonna be union that have more than, I think, four employees. You get a couple exemptions, and then the way it works is the minimum you could pay is, I think, thirteen bucks an hour, plus a 401K, plus seven-hundred dollars in healthcare, and then in addition to that, there's, after four months, there's a grievance process if you want to terminate somebody. So, they've been a really good partner in, in, in Long Beach, you know, as far as, you know, helping getting the ordinance passed, and if, you know, issues come up with council, they've been a good partner, and then, you know, we like to brag about having you union employees and paying a good wage and benefits.
Being a union contract, you will have union employees, supposed to be a union store.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. So, labor peace is the piece to get you to that stage, correct? You sign the piece, you negotiate, your employees decide whether or not they're union...
Well, Long Beach was a requirement in the, in the...
Well, that's, that's Long Beach, but if it's not a requirement, it's still your choice, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, then it's just, that was, it's just Long Beach that's doing that.
Right, yeah, just to clarify, it's not... Right, yeah, just to clarify, it's not decided a hundred percent one way or the other, but whether we go...
It's like, some states are right to work. You can join the union or not.
Right, so either way, I'll be able to use...
The first I heard of it, I'm just learning. Yeah, don't take it any other way.
Whether you're, this specific business in Bellflower is union or not, you'll still be able to utilize the banking on, you know, the Connected Bellflower EEO location. So this is just another kind of overshot of the property.
Just a quick question, are you buying or leasing that property?
I have a ten-year lease. I signed, I'm, I'm going to close, if we get it, I'm going to close in June.
Close on the lease?
No, own the, buy it.
You're going to buy it?
So I put a ten-year lease in. I have a master lease on the property, but I'm going to buy the property.
Are you tolling that lease now while you're going through this process?
The property, the property's still in escrow.
I got it.
So I've been paying the guy to keep the escrow open. Yeah, yeah. So this is the, but we will own the property. This is the overview of the property. There's fourteen total units. Twelve of them are on month-to-month. There's two long-term tenants, so the rest of the property would be accessible. I think I skipped over, I think there's eighty-four total parking spaces on the lot, and, you know, we would, other than the two tenants, we would plan on utilizing the entire space for, for parking. This just shows the leases on the property. The Lubet Wright is the front tenant, and they would have a long-term lease. All the other tenants are on month-to-month leases, and we've made sure that the owner hasn't made different arrangements while we've been in escrow. That was part of the situation. So this kind of gives you an idea of what the development will look like. So like I said, we're trying to run a mega store, so, I mean, seventy-five hundred feet is a very large dispensary, and we just think this property's really good, too, for a delivery. So you'll, the left side there will be the brick and mortar, and then we'll have delivery coming out of the other side. And then, we really like it because you can drive in, you could store, it's very safe, you can bring vans in and out, load product in there, and then, you know, get it out to the, to the street. So this is just kind of another overview of the parking and the, the building. And then this is, our designer did this up, this is what we plan on making it look like. You know, you'll see the different, especially the later ones that I've been, you know, directly involved on the design. You know, we try to make them all nice. They have kind of a theme to them, you know, white and blue. This is what it will look like from the, from the front. Another thing I want to emphasize, the property's okay, but it's not beautiful. We think we could really, you know, take it up to the, to the next level. So these are just pictures from the Belmont Shore location. We're pretty proud of this.
Belmont Shore?
Yeah, Second Street.
Second Street, yeah.
From the mayor goes.
Yeah, so...
Garcia.
As soon as it's his favorite, as soon as it's his favorite collective. But you can see, you know, how we, how we did it, and, you know, we, we got a lot of, you know, initially, people were skeptical about putting a dispensary right in the middle of Belmont Shore. I don't know if you're familiar with Long Beach, but it's the main corridor. You know, I would say that we've done a very good job of running it. I'm in constant contact if there's any issues with the councilwoman in that, in that district. And essentially, I think that any of the naysayers have been, you know, for the most part, quieted. So this is just one thing that I wanted to add. You know, we're here today just, you know, hoping to get the, the retail permit, you know, with a delivery, but in, in the back of our mind, there is a future development opportunity. In the back of the property, there's about nine thousand square feet. Ideally, you know, at some point, you know, if, if we make it through this next step, and we end up, you know, buying the property, we would like to utilize the back nine thousand square feet of the property. We're in contact with one of the most successful cannabis manufacturers in the state that, you know, just hypothetically, as we're discussing it, if it, you know, worked out, would be, be interested. Again, we're just here to try and obtain the retail license today, but just kind of something I wanted to throw in as far as, you know, the delivery with the manufacturing, and, you know, now the revenue numbers are getting very attractive. So this is the last thing. This is the local community benefit. You know, we're very involved in all the communities that we're in. You could probably, in our application, see all sorts of different charities that have written us letters. In Bellflower, for now, we're focused on Computers for Kids, Lakewood's Meals on Wheels, Ronald McDonald House Charities, Food Pantry Org, and Bellflower USD. But, you know, we found the most effective way to contribute to the local community. It's just to, you know, I act as the liaison. If there's any need, you know, typically, you know, the city, if the staff or city council or somebody lets us know there's an event coming up, or this is a good cause, would you donate money to this, as long as the ask is reasonable, we're, we're very open to being a contributing member of, you know, of the, of the community. So, you know, that's pretty much, you know, the, the, the presentation. I just kind of wanted to recap on, you know, the, the main issues that we wanted to stress. You know, I think our revenue numbers are going to be the most compelling. I think our experience is there. We have actual licenses that we've actually run, that we've, you know, been in compliance with the state, the regulators, the security, et cetera, et cetera. You know, we think we have the best location with the most upside on development. And again, you know, just to touch on the banking issue, we do have a, a banking solution, and we'll be very active in the community. So I just want to thank the council and staff for allowing us this, this time to present. And if any questions, I'm open to answer anything.
You want to go first, Sonny?
Yes, okay. Thank you, Mr. Lewis, for your presentation. Can you show your slide regarding your applicant experience?
Yes, sir.
So you've been involved in all these businesses, Mr. Lewis?
Yes, sir. So on this particular slide, I only included the businesses that were either in my name or EEO Holdings' name, but in addition to that, it's not on this list. My wife also holds licenses for cap reasons, but I essentially manage those, and then I consult on a bunch of others. But these are the businesses that are either in my name or in the name of EEO Holdings.
So you're basically running all this business except for being a board member of A-N-H HPC? Other than that, you're actively managing the businesses, correct?
Well, I'm actively involved in the, I mean, I have an ownership interest, technically, because twenty-four-hundred Pullman is a nonprofit. You don't have a typical ownership interest, so it says board member, but there's a management company that's the profit-driven way of, you know, essentially getting profit out of the business. So I also own a share in that. So it says board member, because technically, it's a, the old collectives got set up as nonprofits, right? Now you're allowed to offer, operate for for-profit. So under the old system, you'd set up a nonprofit, you'd control the board, and then there'd be a management company that essentially made the profit. So that's why that says board member, but I'm also an owner of the management.
I see. Can you tell us about, similar to the other two applicants, can you tell us about your hands-on experience in running a dispensary?
So my main part in it is finding the locations, submitting the application, getting through the application process, managing the marketing, and managing the employees. What I'm not an expert at is the, the inventory and the product line and all that. So Connected is an operational expert in that. They're the one, is one of the biggest brands in the state, and as far as, like, filling the store up with product, I rely on their supply line. They have all the fancy, you know, desirable strains, and they get it in there. But as far as actually managing the, the workers and the, the day-to-day, and dealing with the, the politics of it, that's my responsibility.
Okay. So how do, how do you expect to spend your time, once you open, if you open the dispenser in Bellflower? You're so active in all of these dispensaries. Where do you find the time?
I don't know, I just do. I mean, I'll be out there, once it's open, my, my role gets diminished a little bit. I'll be out there on the, the build-out, you know, essentially, you know, at least probably three, four times a week, coordinating everybody. Once you get the right management in place, and you have the, the distribution line, it's, it's not a, you know, like a nine-to-five kind of thing. The bulk of the product is driven on Thursdays down to Southern California from a Sacramento distribution location, so that kind of takes care of itself. Everything gets on the, on the shelf, and then we'll have three managers in place that will essentially run the store on a day-to-day, and then at the end of the day, I'll check in, see how we did, see what the numbers are, see if there's any issues, that sort of thing.
Okay, I see. And I can appreciate you saying that you're, you're going to be accessible in spite of all this. There's question about permits, things like that, you'll be accessible, and yet, you're spending so much time. Do you still find time to sleep? I'm just kind of curious.
I do work like sixteen hours a day. I enjoy working. It's, I have four kids, too, so it's a, it's a busy life, but if you call, I'll answer my phone at any time. If I'm sleeping, I won't, but I'm pretty readily accessible. You know, if there is any issues, you won't have any problem getting ahold of me or addressing it.
Okay, good. In your voluminous information that you gave us, I have to do justice and read them all with all the pages. So I have a question here. I'm just curious about, you did a phase-one environmental site assessment?
Yes, and phase two.
Can you, can you talk about, can you talk about it?
Yeah, so my...
Why you did it, what was the result, and what was...
Yeah, so, just so we knew what we were buying, right?
Okay.
We did a phase one, and then that led to a phase two. And then during the phase two, you'll see there's some additional samplings in there that they took, and everything came back clean. There is some surface issues, but nothing major, nothing that, you know, going to affect the loan or whatever. So essentially, we got a clean bill of health on the, on the, on the phase two.
So if you're given the license, nothing will kind of, this will not delay you opening the dispensary?
Yeah, my escrow closing date is June seventh. I've paid quite a few times to extend that out. I would plan on closing before June seventh.
Okay, and everything's going to be taken care of in terms of environmental issues?
Yeah, so we did all...
By the time?
We did all that, you know, back in, I'm guessing, the December time period, or I would be recollecting, but, or maybe shortly thereafter. Got all the reports just to make sure, you know, we knew what we were buying.
I see, okay. In the, can you show the, the layout on the other businesses in your, in your site?
Uh, let's see.
There you go, that's why. All right. So you mentioned that eventually, if you're given the permit to, license to do dispensary, eventually your, your goal is to make this into more of manufacturing?
Yes, sir.
Is that right? Okay.
Well, I mean, if, you know, the first goal is to get the retail, if there's another opportunity, we would submit an application. There's not a process in place yet, but we would submit an application to try and get a manufacturing license on those back six spaces there.
I know we're just talking about dispensary tonight, but I'm just kind of curious, if, given the opportunity, would you be running manufacturing yourself, or are you going to contract it to someone else?
That's a good question. Probably would, I would be the license holder and probably bring in a, an operator, but, you know, I have different operators that I'm, that I'm discussing the issue with, but I, I don't see bringing in like another license holder or another owner of the license. So where I'm in some early talks, I'd probably have to work something out with the, an operator to come in and, and run it, yeah.
Okay. And, and how, how is your wife involved in these businesses?
Well, she's, she has her name on a, one business in Long Beach, one in Yolo, and one in Calaveras County. Originally, there, there was looking like there was going to be some limits on businesses and canopy and that sort of thing. So she essentially raises my four children, but she participates a little bit in the, in the, in the business side. So I didn't put those on the slide, but, oh, and she's the buyer of the property as well.
I see, okay. Okay, very good. That's all for now. Thank you.
Okay.
So you can lease the property from your wife?
Well, yeah, basically. I mean, I'm, I guess you could say that.
It's a community property state, okay.
So you said your first vocation was a real estate guy?
Yes.
All right, so when I talked to you about, they brought up this evening earlier about how you can buy a property, and suddenly, they find out who it is that's occupying it, and the loan comes due. Now, whenever I borrow money on a commercial property, it usually goes five years, and then look at it again and change the interest rate, or let it alone. What's your experience been if you went out and get a, a bank loan on this property?
Well, so I, if you get a state...
I'm either paying cash and this is all the...
No, I would. So it's a three-point-six million dollar purchase price. The, the, I'm getting a seventy percent loan from a private lender. I, don't quote me exactly, but I think it's a ten-and-a-half percent interest rate. It's not ideal, and it's a pretty big payment, but we think that with the potential of the property, it will justify it.
So you won't have to involve yourself with a commercial banker. It's going to be private money?
Yeah, it's private money. He knows what we're, he knows what the use is going to be, and they're private individuals. So it is true that we've seen this issue actually come up specifically on our Pullman property, and we worked together with the landlord to resolve it, but the, he had a federal, regular banking loan on it, and somehow, they went and looked it up, and they saw that his location was being used for a marijuana dispensary. So they called his loan. He had to get a little bit of a worse loan with a higher interest rate. We negotiated out a, kind of an arrangement where we'd pick up most of the extra payment. So it does happen, but in this case, it won't be an issue. The lender is aware of the property use. It's a private loan. It's not a FDIC loan. But at the current time, anything that's FDIC, you do run the risk of them potentially calling the loan due.
Now, I saw the loan that you were advertising for online. A guy sent me the prospectus on it. I get them every week. And it mentioned, I think that was a thirty-six-month loan?
I...
Or how long do you want to borrow the money for? And what do you do when it's need to be paid off?
Oh, usually, they just, they'll, they'll, they'll refinance it again, and they, they just want to charge you the points again. So it's like...
Is that what it's about? So you pay ten-and-a-half percent for thirty-six months, and in thirty-six months, they're going to ask for a new deal?
Well, I'm paying two-and-a-half points on the loan.
Just to get it going, huh?
And some additional fees. So they're making like, you know, a forty, fifty-thousand-dollar whack. I don't know, it's on the loan amount. So I think the loan amount's two-point-one million. So, yeah, they're making like fifty grand on just...
Who are you borrowing it from, John Gotti?
If I could do better, I would do better. I do have a guy that will do seven, seven-and-a-half, but on a, he doesn't loan on properties this big. It was above his risk appetite. So typically, on the smaller deals that we've done, we'll get a guy come in like seven-and-a-half, seven-and-three-quarters, but he was actually our first option on the property. He passed because of the, the size of the deal, and we ended up bringing this other gentleman in. I'm pretty sure it's ten-and-a-half. I have the loan approval, thirty-six months. That sounds about right.
It's online, it's no secret.
Right, 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 right.
The, you probably know what was on this property before it was built out as a auto...
Salvage art.
It was axle rods, wasn't it?
Axle rods.
We crawled around there looking for Ford Falcon parts.
Yeah.
So there might be a little bit of contamination on the top level, based on what was used before.
Right, so that was our concern, and we did the phase one, and we directly, we did a phase two. Then the guy had some additional concerns. I'm not sure if he was just trying to charge him extra or what, but they did additional borings. So there's nothing under the surface. There is some superficial, maybe contamination at the surface that could be cleaned up. But not only did we do the phase two, they did some additional borings. I don't remember how many, but it was, cost some money to give it a, a full bill of health. And that all was also part of, you know, getting somebody who willing to loan on a property that was, you know, previously, you know, being used as different, there's a bunch of different automotive businesses at the location.
You know, it was interesting, you brought up the idea that you have a unionized labor force. You know, is that an anomaly or natural evolution of the cannabis business? Or are you just a trendsetter trying to get a bank to take your money?
Well, that was kind of lucky, the bank part. I have to admit, we got a little lucky with that.
So first you did the union, and then they said they will take your money?
Well, that was, so, the, the history of Long Beach was, there was, they, it was a person-voted initiative. So the UFCW partnered with the LBCA, who was the Long Beach Collective Association, and helped, helped push through the initiative. And they funded a lot of the initiative, and therefore became our, you know, partners regarding hiring union employees. But it's been a very good, you know, alliance, and so far, they've been very friendly. They, you know, all the kind of stuff you worry about hasn't, hasn't come up. I like all the guys that are running it, seem to be very helpful and everything, and, and it, it feels good to pay, you know, a good living wage as well.
So when you go to the bank to make your deposit, as you mentioned earlier, you pay a premium to put that cash in? They nick you for some consideration?
I think I could say that in a public form. Yeah, it's two percent they charge us.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so like, today, today was a middle-five-figure deposit, so they made, you know, over a grand on the deposit for, you know...
And you could, then they'll put that in your bank account, and you can write checks on it all day long, everything's cool.
Exactly. So that's the issue, that if you, if, you could deposit cash into a bank account, but then if they connect you back to a cannabis business, then they're going to close you down. And, you know, we just, there, there is a credit union, I can't remember the name of it, that they're using for their Northern California stores. In fact, I text the guy, but he must be sleeping. So there is another credit union they use up there. The difference with that one is they have to source the money, so they come in Arbor Car Trucks, and they pick it up from a location. And the main concern is, they're okay with the fact that it's cannabis money, but they want to make sure that it's not any money laundering or, or terrorist-related. So as long as they can pick it up from an actual, physical location, and you can source it with P&Ls, that's, that's the option we've been using. Now the UFCW makes it easy for us, so we don't have to move money, you know, up north or keep it in the, keep it in the safe.
So the, you've heard the testimony from the earlier applicants whereby they have really not developed a plan yet to handle their cash. They have an idea what they're going to do...
Right.
But they haven't pulled the trigger on it yet because they haven't done the actual business. You're, you being a consultant, will it be a, if you had someone that was just beginning the process of getting into cannabis business on a dispensary basis, would you see that they might have some... on a dispensary basis, would you see that they might have some, uh, concerns as to how to get this going? Or is it gonna be just, I go to the teachers' union, they'll take my money?
Well, I, in my experience, I, I know that there's, and I don't want, you know, there's, even the credit unions that are doing it, it's very, like, they wanna, they wanna see years of books, and there's a lot of prove-up just to get into the door. Um, the UFCW, uh, credit union has been a, uh, a very good solution. I don't think you could walk into the teachers' unions and make those kind of deposits. There is a bill in the works that's coming down the pipeline that they, they kind of alluded to, that California is gonna set up its own state charter bank and take the money, I think, eventually. So within, I don't know when that solution's coming down the pipe, but if I was gonna guess, maybe, you know, within 12 months, I, and I think more and more, there's, you know, more banking solutions, you know, coming online. It might be some years before it happens at the federal level. We'll see. But I do think California will have a lot of options within probably a year or so.
But if you were gonna open up another dispensary, say, another city is allowing it to go forward, you would certainly use the same model that you've developed now with the union employees and using that bank to support it?
Well, so, not only have I been able to use my Long Beach, uh, uh, bank with the Long Beach business, because I'm a member, I could bring the cultivation money out of Yolo. I can, I have another, uh, business that's nearby that, they're, they're fine with you opening up any business account. So here in Bellflower, whether I went union or not, if I was, you know, lucky enough to be awarded the license, they would take the, the Bellflower cash. Just as long as you have the P&Ls and you can prove where it's, you know, coming from, and they know that you're essentially paying taxes on it and all that.
We toured a dispensary, City Council, and there was an ATM machine in the dispensary. Is that a model that you developed?
Uh, well, we do have an ATM machine.
Alright, so you can go in there and put your, and you get your cash, and you can buy your product. Is that the deal?
That, that is, that is correct.
You know, in our guidelines, we've specified that we're looking at a cashless, um, monetary system for most of the dispensary uses on this, and that's in the guidelines that we presented, so he would, anybody, if there is a candidate awarded a license, they'd have to familiarize themselves with that requirement.
Yeah, I apologize if I missed, but currently in Long Beach, we do have an ATM in there. If it's not part of the guidelines here in Bellflower, obviously, before we open, we have a, a compliance officer. They call her the Bulldog. She's really nice, but she's, she's tough. Uh, she makes sure that, uh, you know, she's called the Bulldog for a reason. She'll, she'll read the, you know, all the specifics of the ordinance and make sure we're in compliance before we, before we open.
Alright. Do you have any questions of us? We haven't posed that before, but, uh, you know, when we, we've asked you a lot of questions, is there anything that we've said or asked of you, and probably should give the same opportunity to everybody?
Um, I don't think I have, uh, any questions at this time, other than the main overhanging question.
Yeah, give me the license, yeah.
But, uh, no, I, I just, you know, again, wanna thank everybody for their time, and thank staff, and, you know, I, I know this has been a long, uh, you know, drawn-out night, and it-
No, this is nothing. We were at a 4:45 one month.
Right, 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 right.
But anyway, uh, thank you for your testimony. I'll give it back to the mayor.
Can you put the slide back? I'm not, yeah, I got a question, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Um, Mr. Lewis, uh, the slide for the, there was the applicant, or the, you, uh, entity that slide, you had, uh, six or seven of the businesses, yeah?
This one, or these are the actual-
No, you back, go back to the other one, yeah, that one there.
Yes.
Percent of interest, and it says, like, let's say the top one's on Second Street, I guess, and, but now, what's nonprofit mean?
So-
That's your percent?
Technically, it's nonprofit, so there's no ownership interest, right? But it's a collective.
Collective, I got it, okay.
But there's a management company, and of that management company, I own about, let's say, 37 and a half, 40 percent.
Gotcha, okay.
And then 3170 Cherry is essentially the exact same, um, setup. So the good thing about Bellflower, kinda doing this closer to 2018, we, now you're allowed to do a for-profit. Under the old rules, you had to be-
The collective was, that's a, collective's an old term now.
Right, right.
I got it, that's why I forgot about that.
So when it says nonprofit, I think, you know, my attorney's being hyper-technical.
Yeah, no, I get it now.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, okay. Um, I think that was it. Yeah, Mr. Stewart got on about the property lease versus ownership. Um, question now. That's it, let's see what the public has to say.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
He said on 3.6 million, 70% is 2.5, 2 million, that's loan. I was looking at the 10%, but that's 400,000 just on interest plus 100. Is he gonna be able to cut plus 100 just on the principal? He also said he has ownership in the company. How much, is it a 100% ownership, or is it, uh, more than 50% ownership? Because he's leasing part of the property from his wife. And also, how, there's one owner that said he's gonna, uh, he's committed to 1% of the thing going to charity, helping out. He's saying, what, what's reasonable? I'm just curious, what's reasonable for him? Is it 1%, 2%, or it could be 5,000?
The other applicant, that was just gonna be their model. I don't know what this-
Well, that's what I'm saying, I'm just curious, what his, what he wants to do, and-
You said reasonable.
Uh, yeah, that reasonable is different things for different people, you know what I mean?
And different businesses.
Yeah, discretion, yeah, that's what I'm saying, okay.
Yeah.
And I'm just curious-
So you're concerned about the percent of ownership he has at that location?
Yeah, I'm just because somebody else gave up a percentage, and he didn't give it as a percentage. That's what I'm saying.
We're gonna back up and ask that.
And also, I mean, you can, it'll be ownership, but does he have 100% ownership in those businesses, or just 51 controlling it? That's what I'm curious about, also.
We'll have to have a question.
Thank you.
Anybody else wanna come up on the, at the podium and talk about this entity?
Okay. Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Uh, just, uh, just trying to take the opportunity that the, uh, the most recent applicant has taken to speak, speak to some of the comments made by previous applicants. I think it's important to note, just out of fairness, and so that you have the full information, as you deliberate, uh, Balfour Wellness is committed to signing a labor peace agreement. Uh, they know that that is a legal requirement. That is cali, uh, under the BCC, the Bureau of Cannabis Control, all license holders, provided license, after the municipality provides a license, to gain and hold a state license, you have to have, uh, labor peace agreement in place. That's the law. So they will be, as they've noted earlier, fully compliant with that process. Uh, I, uh, as you, Mayor, may not know, I had a, a very long working relationship with the labor community. I was a labor chairman in the California State Assembly. I, I led, I chaired the Labor and Employment Committee. Uh, so this client here will have that relationship with United Food and Commercial Workers. That commitment's already been made, and they have to have that labor peace agreement by state law. All applicants and recipients must have that. So just want you to know that, that relationship is there, and that peace agreement will be there, and that compensation will be there. I have successfully navigated other-
This is not a comment on this presentation. He's now editorializing on a previous application.
Got a point.
Thank you, Council.
And your name is Mr. Hernandez?
Yes, probably.
For the, okay.
The only thing that I'm still going to say on this thing is, I'm not worried about the money. You, you join a union, the only way you get out, you file the bankruptcy totally and disappear because they will never let you go. They can always come back at you at any later, later time in, in your business world, or in your own world, and collect whatever they figure you screwed them out of for 10, 15 years ago. I can detest to that. So, I know Sacramento is working on a deal for a banking system for this cannabis. I've heard that, the gentleman brought it up. It's very true. How, how fast it comes into place, we all, none of us really know. It's like the train to nowhere. But basically, I still think to keep all the sales tax dollars in this town, the guideline still stays with the party that'll take all four. That's my personal opinion, because if it went that way in the beginning, you'd only have three people to monitor instead of a whole half a dozen. And how are you gonna monitor a whole half a dozen? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butts. Anybody else?
Good evening, I'm Priscilla Brown. I just had a couple of general statements. I hope that you do keep in mind that the three dispensaries we already have are all on the west side of town, and they're all in one, one area, and they're all in the neighborhood watch district of five, which is the highest crime area, which I know you don't feel, and everybody feels, it's not gonna bring crime. But just keep that in mind, that they're all in one area. And, um, just a general statement about, I know there was a big deal may, being made out of the, um, 22 parking spaces at the old Ming's location. But you guys, with the exception, exception of Mr. Coops, um, approved the one on Alondra with seven parking spaces. And at that time, I questioned, like, where are the employees gonna park? Is this gonna be enough parking? It was like, yeah, this meets the standards. But now, it's like being questioned that the 22 spaces are gonna be enough, and that their employers are gonna be parked on the street. So, just, just a general statement. So, thank you.
Thank you, Priscilla. Anybody else wishing to come forward? If not, let's hear the applicant back up here, Mr. Lewis.
Uh, so I think I took a couple notes. Uh, if I miss anything, let me know. Uh, the one gentleman was concerned about the paying of the loan. It's approximately a 2.1 million dollar loan. I think it, with taxes, insurance, probably 22,000 payments or so. Uh, you know, under the, the current collection of rent, it pretty much covers. I don't see any issues, uh, covering the, uh, the payment. You know, we're paying $20,000 a month for our Pullman location for a lot less, uh, square footage. As far as the charity, you know, I think 1% is, you know, a pretty good, uh, benchmark, you know, that, obviously be at our, uh, discretion, but, uh, you know, I, I think that's a, a, a fair number to, to, to put out there. He, he brought up the BCC legal requirements. I do think the union statewide is, uh, I didn't know that, I knew it was kind of, uh, on its way. It sounds like it's-
For more than 20 employees.
Right, so we're gonna, yeah. But, uh, so I, you know, we're, uh, you know, we're ready for that if it does happen. We've already had union employees. I don't know who the, uh, the local is, uh, here, but, uh, you know, we'd be open to, to meet them and discuss, uh, you know, a plan moving forward. I think as far as the, the ladies' comments on the, on the parking, uh, we have 84 spots. I think a little bit right maybe uses, I, you know, don't quote me, 10 or so of them, so I think we will have, uh, you know, very sufficient parking. I think that's one of the, uh, really beneficial parts of our location, is the overall size that we're gonna build a dispensary, as well as the, uh, the amount of parking that we-
There's a question on your ownership percentage as well.
What, what's that?
There's a question on your ownership percentage as well.
100% of the, yeah, I'll own 100% of E Holdings LLC, so. There will be an operational arrangement, um, product and stuff with Connected, but I'll own 100% of the license.
Uh, let's see it. I think that's all the questions that I recollect.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lewis. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to close of public hearing.
Second. Okay, without objection, that'll be the order? Okay.
What they need to do?
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you've had the presentations, you've considered the evidence and the record. Force ranking sheet should be filled out. Please do, uh, put your name at the top, so that the clerk will know how you've ranked each of these presenters. Once all of you have, uh, done the ranking, then hand it to the city clerk. She'll take a view of it in about five minutes and come up with any indication of whether there's a clear number one, number two, and number three. She's gonna double-check her numbers.
Okay, per the force ranking sheets, um, EEL Holdings has received a number one ranking from two council members. Okay, so the first box will be just a one, correct?
So, Mr. Gurecki, on the, under the names, let's just change that to final ranking. So change the, the box from name to final ranking. And then the city clerk indicated that two out of three council members selected EEL Holdings as having ranked number one. So, instead of joint forces, just put EEL Holdings there under number one. And then for number two?
For number two, joint forces, received a rank number two from two council members.
Okay. And the final applicant?
Uh, Balfour Medical Wellness received a rank number three from all three council members.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, based upon that ranking, the resolution to consider for adoption would be resolution number 18 dash 29. I should note, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that EEL Holdings previously dismissed a lawsuit against the city. The city incurred approximately $13,000 in defense costs against that litigation. That's something that you may wanna consider when considering the conditions of approval in terms of reimbursement. Otherwise, the other permities will be required to defend and indemnify the city with regard to that amount, and would be split amongst all those other permities.
Short answer, staff doesn't necessarily think that's fair to split those costs among the other permities, even those that were not necessarily successful tonight. So we're looking at, um, adding that, if, if the council agrees with that assessment, we'd look to add that condition to the list.
I thought, uh, there was correspondence sent to them regarding that. There wasn't?
There was, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there was correspondence sent, sent to all of the existing permities. EEL Holdings did not hold a permit for MCBP, so it did not have a medical cannabis business permit at the time that the litigation was filed. So the litig, the correspondence was sent to the existing permities to remind them of the defense and indemnification obligation. All those permities acknowledge that defense and indemnification obligation, and stand prepared to pay for it. The point I believe the city manager is making is, why should it be split amongst those permities when this particular permit is the one that incurred the costs in the first place?
You know, I get that. I'm just trying to think of how much was, was that's developed, developed in a closed-session stuff? And, and I, I thought maybe there was correspondence delivered to the-
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yeah.
I'll pay it.
Second thing, um, councilwoman wanted to deliberate on, is if this ranking sticks, and the council does wish to award that permit, in, in the event that another permit becomes available, I'm not predicting or saying it will, but if it does, are you willing to stick with this ranking through the additional permit, all the way down to the, the number three ranking here? For, if two more permits come up for, for renewal, or do you wanna review the next one, if there is a next one, independently? I guess is the question I'm asking.
I'm good with this ranking.
So you're, you're good for the next, up to, up to the next two?
If somebody else were to forfeit their dispensary license.
Or if two were forfeit, you would go with, okay, so there's no animus between-
I revert back to this license order.
Okay, so you're willing-
An applicant order.
You're, you're concurring that we'll work with this list for the next two, if two become available. We don't have to bring this back. Okay.
I, that's, that ain't how I feel.
Okay.
Uh, no, I'm not, not to me.
It's fine.
You wanna start over again?
Then that's fine. I'm just clarified. So we don't need to change anything on that. We'll just go forward, but.
We'd have to start the whole process over and take new applicants, then.
Or, or a rank, different ranking method. You take applicants for a ranking method, they can all, they can all submit. They may change their mind. They may change their mind. They may, you know, these people may not want to, this meant to you.
And also, they might, they might do something different between now and then.
Alright, I'll go with the majority. Okay.
So we're going to put all this into the resolution? Well, I know, I get that, the fees, the, we're going to start over with the ranking, if any more.
We don't, we don't need to listen to the applicant. We'll just, we'll have it administratively correct.
That's his direction.
I'm just, I'm just looking for direction from you on that.
Okay, that, that was a direction item, okay.
Will the fees be a condition, or is it?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you looking for a motion, Ray?
Yeah, I was kind of seeing where we're at here because there's a, one, two, okay, which one? So it'd be resolution 18-29.
Yes.
That's the one we're going to work with, yeah.
Well, I, I'd like to make a motion, resolution 18-29, resolution approving a medical cannabis business permit to operate a medical cannabis dispensary at 9032 through 9038 Artesia Boulevard, City of Balfour, applicant L.A. Lewis, representing EEL Holdings LLC. And included in that is the $13,000 reimbursement for city costs of, that he's volunteered to pay.
I have a second motion. I have a second motion.
Got a motion on the floor by Councilmember Coops, and a second by Mayor Protem Sunny Santanias. Call roll, please.
Mayor Protem Santanias?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Mayor Denton?
Aye. Okay, item 12 on the agenda. We have no ordinance as scheduled, and item 13, we have no consideration items. And we've already blew through the consent calendar. Okay, with that said, I'm going to call for adjournment to the next regular council meeting for the Bellflower City Council at 5:30 PM on Monday, June 11, 2018.
I had no comments anyway. I want to go home.
No, I just, I only needed one vote. I already knew I didn't want them. I thought he was way available.